So she's gonna be joining us on the way up at the top. So she's just woken up a little bit. She's got some food in there waiting for her.
The LAPD Mounted Police and Robbie the Robot from the Bureau of Sanitation were also there to meet the students. Transforming the San Pedro waterfront is one of Councilman Joe Buscaino's main priorities, and one of many projects that will complete that transformation recently broke ground. The Port of Los Angeles has long been known for its commerce, but not as a tourist destination. That's about to change. City leaders recently broke ground on a renovation project at the Plaza Park in San Pedro, located between 7th and 13th Streets and Beacon Street and Harbor Boulevard, a project ten years in the making. The first of four planned phases includes the construction of new concrete paths and guardrails, new benches, drinking fountains, and infrastructure for future lighting and slope irrigation.
The beautification of Plaza Park means we are one step closer to becoming a destination. I look forward to driving down Harbor Boulevard and witnessing the transformation in progress. Progress is underway, ladies and gentlemen, and this is only the beginning.
The Plaza Park renovation project was spearheaded by San Pedro resident Anne Gouchet ten years ago. She was honored at the groundbreaking ceremony, but the project has become a true collaborative effort with many city departments, including Recreation and Parks and the Bureau of Engineering.
Personally, I live on 17th Street, so I use this area all the time. I walk and run up and down these stairs as part of my exercise, so I'm looking forward to the improvement. I think it's something that's really beneficial to San Pedro in opening up the waterfront. Once this is created, it's gonna be here for generation after generation for this community. And this is a legacy that we can leave behind for our kids and grandkids and children.
A community better known for its industrial contributions is making a name for itself as a destination town, one improvement, one park at a time. In this week's List of Things to Do, a celebrity curates an exhibit all about Rebel Without a Cause, a child's safety seat event, and a Greek festival in the valley. Actor, writer, Oscar host, and now artist, James Franco recently premiered his exhibit Rebel at the Museum of Contemporary Art in Los Angeles, or Mocha. Rebel is an ode to Nicholas Ray's masterpiece Rebel Without a Cause. Franco got his big break playing James Dean in the 2001 TV movie. The exhibit, which features the works of many different individuals, uses film, video, photography, painting, and more to reinterpret the film, its many themes, the actors themselves, as well as the film's place in history. The exhibit is being hosted at a pop-up annex location at 941 North Highland Avenue. More info can be found at mocha.org. If you're in town on Memorial Day weekend, head on over to the St. Nicholas Valley Greek Festival at the St. Nicholas Greek Church, located at 9501 Balboa Boulevard in Northridge. The three-day festival, the biggest Greek festival in all of Los Angeles, will be held Friday to Monday, May 26th, 27th, and 28th, from 1:00 to 9:00 p.m. daily. This San Fernando Valley tradition features Greek music, dance, food, culture, games, booths, and more. For more information, go to valleygreekfestival.com. And if you have a baby or toddler, it is of the utmost importance to make sure their car seats are safely installed. That's why the Northridge Hospital Medical Center is holding a child care seat safety event on Saturday, May 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the hospital's education auditorium. The checkups are run by trained and certified child passenger safety technicians. The hospital is located at 18300 Roscoe Boulevard in Northridge. The event is by appointment only. To schedule an inspection, call 818-885-8500, extension 3437. And remember, you can find this information on our Facebook page, and that's a look at some upcoming things to do. Home tours are away for everyday folks interested in architecture and design to see how the other half lives, but at one recent home tour, the spotlight was not on the houses, but the gardens out back. It's the latest thing in gardening, backyard beekeeping. Not only can the bees help increase the pollination in your garden, you can even harvest your own honey. It's just one of the things folks learned about at the Learning Garden. It's one of the gardens that took part in the fourth annual Mar Vista Green Gardens showcase, a free self-guided tour of community and home gardens.
We're here to meet the other people who are in the garden tour and kinda share, because actually, this is the first year they're doing that, because last year, everybody's in their home, hoping, you know, people come and see their garden, and we don't get to meet each other, all the people on the tour, so they thought it'd be a great idea to meet all the people who have the same, you know, excitement and enthusiasm for growing things in their yard.
At the Mar Vista Green Gardens Showcase pre-show event, folks did more than mingle. They took a tour of the Learning Garden, Venice High School's student garden.
At all the schools, they grow things that they can eat, so that's the primary thing, but the ornamentals bring in the important bees and other insects that help the edibles thrive, and they're also, of course, very aesthetically pleasing.
Gardening is one of the most nurturing connections we can make that enhance our lives.
Councilmember Bill Rosendahl, who dropped by the preview event, picked a few vegetables to take home.
Good carrots, folks. They're growing carrots right here, Venice High School. How wonderful.
The annual event is gaining a following from an increasing number of people who are growing instead of buying the food they eat.
My children, they will eat basil leaves or mint leaves right off of the bush, and they just love, you know, great tasting vegetables, and it's just amazing to me that that comes out of the earth.
Out of the earth and onto your plate, a way of life that's taking root. In all, this year's showcase featured 99 gardens, including school gardens and green sites like the Million Trees L.A. facility, but most were home gardens. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at ellicityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook.
Graffiti removal? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Hi, I'm Nina. This is my daughter Miranda, and we live in Silver Lake. We love the cultural diversity of Los Angeles. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35.
Good morning. It's Wednesday, May 23rd. This is your Los Angeles City Council. I want to say welcome to all of you and a congratulations to our L.A. Kings, the one team that we have that's been winning. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and all of our meetings are open to the public, so you're welcome to come. Now, we do not have a quorum as of yet, but we do have a presentation today by Mr. Jose Uizar. So, Mr. Uizar, the floor belongs to you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for putting us into the schedule today. And colleagues, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize a community organization which, for 30 years, has dedicated itself to empowering the youth in our state to become California's future leaders. I am talking about the Chicano-Latino Youth Leadership Project. It is a community-based organization which was founded in 1982 with the primary purpose of preparing students to participate in California's economic, social, and political development. Since the inception of the organization, 120 to 140 high school students from throughout the state of California have participated in its week-long intensive leadership training program in Sacramento each year. The project's programs emphasize the importance of culture, community, college, and careers. They connect young people with community volunteers, policymakers, and professionals to motivate leadership and civic engagement. They work with young people to motivate them to pursue an education and become involved, engaged members of their communities. More than 3,400 students have gone through the programs, and more than 90% of these have gone on to attend college. Many alumni have become successful leaders in both the public and private sector. Here with us today is Norma Dominguez, who is the organization's board president and alum of the project, as well as Ulysses Sanchez, who is also an alum and a former staff member of Mayor Villarosa. Victor Franco, which many of you know in these hallways, and also worked for the Central City Association. All these are alum and continue to be involved in this great city because of this program. We're also joined today by friends and supporters of the project who will have an event later today. I may add that my chief of staff, Fana Cubas, was also an alum of this program. It's important to note that the organization is an all-volunteer organization. There are no employees. Everything from the Sacramento Weeklong Conference, the Los Angeles and Fresno-based Leadership Institutes are coordinated by volunteers like the ones you see here today. In fact, 94 cents of each dollar they raise goes directly to fund student services. And now, please join me in congratulating the Chicano-Latino Youth Leadership Project for their great success in empowering our youth for the past 30 years, and we certainly wish them a happy anniversary on this 30th year. So, Norma, Ulysses, and Victor, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, here's a resolution signed by all the council members, and we wanted to congratulate you on the important work you're doing, particularly because it's volunteer-based. I know it's very, very hard for many of you to go off and take that week off and be with our young people, to prepare them to be future leaders of this great state. Congratulations once again.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. My name is Norma Dominguez. I'm a current president of the Board of Directors. On behalf of our over 200 volunteers across the state of California, who collectively we put in over 25,000 hours as a community every year, throughout the year, to put on our programs in the summer, thank you so very much. I would like to thank Councilmember Uizar, the entire City Council, Mayor Antonio Villarosa, who's been host to our Los Angeles Institute participants for the last five years since we started here in Los Angeles, City Controller Gruel, and City Attorney Trutanich for the city resolution. For 30 years, the Chicano-Latino Youth Leadership Project has been dedicated to empowering our youth to embrace their role as leaders here in California by emphasizing the four Cs: community, culture, college, and careers. It's through the support by elected officials like all of you and throughout the state that we've, and private organizations, public foundations, that we were able to fulfill our commitment to our youth, and for that, we are very appreciative. As the others here with me, we're alumni of the project, and we believe you know many of our alumni throughout the state, so on behalf of everyone associated with CIYOP across the state, we want to say thank you for this beautiful resolution, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you for putting us into this very busy schedule today that I know Mr. Garcetti wants to get work on right away, so he's...
Thank you, Mr. Uizar, and again, congratulations again. Mr. Clerk, I believe at this time we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Alarcon Buscaino Cardenas, Englander Garcetti, Uizar Corretz, Krikorian Lavange, Parks Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine Wesson, 11, or excuse me, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Reyes moves, Krikorian seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Alarcon moves, Garcetti seconds. Okay, so that brings us where? We should go through the agenda at this point, so if you could read the first set of items.
Very good, sir. Mr. President, items 1 through 9 are items known as for public hearing. There is an amending motion for item 9 that's being prepared and should be held on the desk.
Okay, so let's hold item 9. Any cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on item 4.
On item 4?
Correct, sir.
Members specials? Members specials? Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next set of items.
Mr. President, items 10 through 16 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, members, any specials? 10 through 16. Mr. Garcetti wants item 10. Mr. Corretz.
Item 10 special?
Mr. Corretz. What item did Mr. Garcetti just call special? Okay, no, we're gonna do it this way. Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Corretz call item 10 special. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 21 for Mr. Rosendahl, please.
We haven't gotten there yet, but I will make a note, and when we get to 21, I'll hold it for Bill. Okay, on the remaining items, members, prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That brings us to the last section, Mr. Clerk. That's 17 through 27.
Item 17 through 27 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, and we know we want to hold item 21 for Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Lavange.
I'd like to continue with three weeks. The CAO has not had a chance to talk to the Los Angeles Airport Department, and they can resolve this matter and come back to us.
Okay, let's do this. It was held for Mr. Rosendahl.
Well, only because Mr. Krikorian spoke before I could speak, because it never was called. Either of us would do it.
Why don't we do this, Mr. Lavange? Why don't we wait till Mr. Rosendahl gets here? Make sure he's comfortable. I definitely have no problems in continuing it.
Got it. Thank you very much.
So when he comes, you know, notify me, and we'll take it.
We'll figure out which way, whether Rosendahl or Lavange. Thank you, Mr. President.
Members, any other? Mr. Garcetti?
Yes, item 24, and if we can take that special out of order even before public comments, a reward motion.
Yeah, no, I've been informed about that one, and that's 24. Members, any other specials? Any other specials? Okay, let's prepare to... Yes, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, pardon me. We do have cards in on item 17.
Oh, we have cards on 17?
18.
Yes.
21, 22, 23, 24, and 27.
27?
Correct.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll?
I'm still...
Wait, we have to hold on. Are we ready?
23, 24, 27.
Okay, if you could open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Clerk, I've just been informed, and Mr. Lavange, that Mr. Rosendahl agrees with you, so on item, is it 21, that we can continue that for three weeks? Mr. Clerk, if you could find out what date that will be.
Mr. President, that's June 13.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zine?
11 forthwith, please.
11 forthwith.
Mr. President, pardon me. So, before moving on, 21 will be continued to June 13th without objection?
There's no objection.
Very good, sir.
Okay, so now, at this point, we can do general public comment, or we could do, take care of some business. I think I want to let Mr. Garcetti, why don't you do your... Is it 24, which is the reward motion? Why don't we do that, and then after, when you complete that, we'll go into the general public comment portion.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I appreciate that very much. Item 24, colleagues, is a reward motion before us, and we have Detective Ulysses Sanchez here from Robbery/Homicide Division. This is the renewal of reward offer relative to the death of Hila Ali Pakman. We've had this out there from March 9th of last year, October 26th. We ask that we extend this for an additional six periods. Hila Pakman, a 39-year-old white man, was stabbed to death Thursday, June 24th, 2010. Is that correct? In the 1,600 block of the north El Centro Avenue in Hollywood, in front of the Hollywood Holistic Medical Marijuana Dispensary. No drugs or monies appear to have been taken in the attack, but we speculate the killer or killers may have intended to rob the facility but panicked and fled after the killing, or perhaps applauded to kill Pakman for some unrelated matter. We do not know how many suspects, but I'd like to turn it over to Detective Sanchez for any information and ways of getting in touch if we do have any leads out there, and we need the public's help very much to solve this homicide.
Good morning. I am Detective Ulysses Sanchez from Robbery/Homicide Division. I'm here because I'd like to, on behalf of the family and the department, we'd like to extend, request an extension on the reward. We have developed some new leads in this case, and what we have is we've recovered some surveillance footage showing the individuals that most likely committed this crime, and what we would like to do is eventually have a press conference, but when we have that press conference, we'd like to let the public know that there is a reward out there for someone to come forward and identify the two individuals in the surveillance footage.
If they need to get in touch in the meantime, is there a general number they should call or a number they should reach?
Yes. In the meantime, I'm the lead detective handling the case. I can be reached at Robbery/Homicide Division 213-486-6890, or you can ask for my partner, Detective Chuck Knowles, and he can be reached at the same number.
Okay. Thank you very much, Detective. Appreciate your work on this, and we will work to get that information out to the press and with the new leads that we have. Colleagues, I ask for your support. Thank you.
No, thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and please do the members of the public that are viewing this broadcast. If you have any information, please forward it to the Los Angeles Police Department. So on this item, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Forthwith, Mr. Clerk, now that we have over 12 members present, let us have a vote on reconsidering items 1 through 3, and then we'll vote on those items again. So on reconsideration, if we could open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now, can we vote on the 3 at one time as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, members, now we're actually voting on the ordinances, so let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna move to general public comment. And I'm gonna... I really am not sure of the last name, but it's Jim Van Dusen Brian Dyer Olga Hall. If you could please come forward. Clerk, it looks like, I mean sergeants, it looks like he'd like to hand you something? Yes, sir. Your time is rolling.
Good morning. My name is Jim Van Dusen. I've resided in Hollywood Hills for 40 years. My comments have to do with why you should vote no on the Hollywood Community Plan in its current form, as well as issues with the potential 55-story high-rise building scheduled to be built in the Capitol Records Building corridor. There are many deficiencies with the Hollywood Community Plan, one being that it will cause catastrophic additional traffic because people will have to commute to Hollywood as the companies they work for move out of areas of the city of Los Angeles into the new Hollywood Century City. The Quanga Pass and all other routes of the valley will be gridlocked, and people will take other routes through the canyons to drive to their homes. We have seen a significant increase in vehicle and foot traffic throughout the Hollywood canyons. People and cars vie for space on very narrow windy streets, much of which have no canyons, sidewalks. When this already precarious situation collides with an even greater number of cars speeding through windy residential streets trying to get to and from the new Hollywood Century City, we have the elements for a perfect storm. I would like to put a human face on this. Recently, a young woman died in an auto accident in the Hollywood Hills. Driving too fast, she missed a sharp curve in the street. This was a tragic accident. We also know how much more tragic it could have been had her car encountered the foot traffic just around the curve. The fundamental problem is that there is no realistic proposal to address and solve the commute traffic issues in the Hollywood Community Plan. I implore you to vote no on the Hollywood Community Plan and send it back for further review, as well as scrutinize carefully the upcoming requests for high-rise office buildings planned for the Capitol Records Building corridor. This includes studying down-zoning alternatives. I would hate to see that we did not take any lessons from the young woman who died trying to navigate through the winding and narrow streets in the hills. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brian Dyer, and I live in what is considered the core of Hollywood, the 90028 ZIP code. And while there are many things I love about the Hollywood Community Plan, I can't be here to tell them next week because I'm only allowed two minutes, so I want to talk about the safety and lack of it in the plan. It's inaccurate to quote the Honorable Tom Lavange, "Safety first," he said in a transportation meeting, and to quote Mayor Villarosa earlier this month at the Metro hearing for the Century City Station, "Safety first." He said this because a fault line had been found to have been active, which wasn't considered active. The same fault line that the Hollywood Community Plan says is inactive. In fact, none of the references in the EIR use any studies post-2000. That's a 12-year gap missing in the Hollywood Community Plan. So think of Hollywood as a cork in the Quanga Pass, not allowing people to go through as the more dense it gets. It's already bad. Since services are being cut by the city, remote emergency services getting in and out won't be able to be delivered to the residents, or the 10 million yearly tourists that the Chamber of Commerce of Hollywood says comes in and out, which effectively swells the population, triples and doubles it weekly. Let's look at something. Even with the push to build Hollywood and Highland, which opened in 1999, development of larger mixed-use buildings since then, and the opening of Metro Red Line stations in 1999, the tunnel of which, as you may recall, collapsed due to an inaccurate EIR, even this has not been able to increase population growth in Hollywood as hoped by the city. In fact, there's been no growth, only a 10-year steady decline of 6% according to the U.S. Census just recently out for 2010. This is a negative 15% of what is stated in the plan. The test of time clearly shows a failure to attract residents, a failure which cannot be blamed on the economic crises of 2008. They are choosing to live elsewhere. Elegant density is pushing them away, so why, after 10 years of not meeting goals, does the city keep allowing variances to any developer who wants them? Why does the city, to quote Dolly Parton, "keep pouring 10 pounds of mud into a 5-pound bag"? I can only surmise it is because of economic needs, so my safety and that of a Hollywood residence is being sold by the city.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hall, please come forward.
Good morning, Mr. President, and members of the council. I'm here today to make sure you understand what is at stake, what is gonna take place on Friday. Last year, with your vote, you gave the Autry the only leverage my community had to make sure Autry abide by the law in honor of the merger. Please do not make the same mistake. Again, as President Kennedy said, an error is not a mistake unless you fail to correct it. Mr. Lavange, the idea of bringing other entities to the table, to the working group for the Southwest Museum, we feel is not helpful. They are not community. This is a community matter, and we would appreciate for you to not include outside entities that do not live in the area, having a say in our business. The only parties have to be Southwest Museum Community, Autry, and the city. Please do the right thing by supporting the history and wealth of our community. Please do the right thing by supporting the history and wealth of our community. Have Autry abide the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if I could call Sean Murphy, George Abrahams, and Mervyn Evans. So I'd like to see all the three of you come here as quickly as you can. The first one to the podium speak, so Mr. Evans, that's you? Oh, no, you got...
Abrahams. Hi.
Mr. Abrahams has something for dis... Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. Coanga is a main traffic corridor with a major choke point between Sunset and Hollywood's boulevards. It is congested every day with commuter traffic. It cannot tolerate any additional density, but the Hollywood Community Plan proposes to make Coanga a major development area with no height limit. The proposed hotel project at the corner of Coanga and Selma is a prime example of development for all the wrong reasons. Coanga and Selma are both narrow substandard streets. There couldn't be a worse location for a nine-story, 148-room hotel. The developer for that project was offered expedited green card citizenship approval in exchange for financing the product, project. It was not a business decision based on how that development would either be successful or serve the needs of the residents in the neighborhood. Just like the failed W Hotel, it is subsidized by an entity with other goals. That developer would likely be just as happy to burn his money in order to get citizenship as developed at the location. And if he did, it would be better for all of us because at least that way, Coanga would not become further gridlocked with traffic. Decisions to create development should only be to serve a community need and only by investors whose purpose is the success of the project. Not only should the Hollywood Community Plan disallow these destructive projects, but the city council should have the good sense not to give variances for them either. If you want to prevent a traffic disaster in the center of Hollywood, you must cancel the approvals for this project before it breaks ground.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Abrahams. Okay, Sean, before you start, I'm going to tell you what we're going to do. We're going to let you do your public comment, and then you called item four special. I'm going to then take that, we'll vote on it. So when you finish with your general public comment, just remain at the podium for item four. Okay? Now, I'll get to Mr. Evans right after you. Okay, Sean, go ahead.
Good morning, Sean Murphy. Do we feel safe in our city? I don't think so. I heard a lot. The bus driver has been killed. I'm sorry for the family. There must, there should be a fund to pay for his funeral and stuff. I think MTA should put in a fundraiser for his funeral. Also, I'm letting you know, June 13th will be my last city council meeting on the 12th. My summer break is coming up soon, Herv. Thank you.
Okay, stay there, Sean. So what, you will be coming back after the break, right? Okay. Now, members, we're going to switch and actually move to item number four. Mr. Clerk, you're clear? Okay, Sean, now you have a card in for item four, so go on and speak.
Item four, I'm for it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm glad. Okay, with that strong recommendation from our friend Sean, let us open the rolls. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, I want to call up Mervyn Evans, followed by Dr., Mr. Zine.
On 12, please.
Fourth, on what?
12.
On 12, forthwith. Okay, so I want to call Mervyn Evans, Dr. Tom Williams, and Dow House Dude. So if I could see you guys get in position. Mr. Evans, haven't seen you in a while. Welcome.
Yeah, it's good to see you as chairman, Mr. Wesson. It really is good to see you as the chairman, and I want to thank you...
Mr. Evans is president.
Oh, that's right. I appreciate the correction. Let me share with you that, as we all know in council, it's time to get our voters out. Let's encourage our absentee voters to go vote. And one of the most reliable sources of information is the website, ourcandidates.info. The reason why I approached council today is that I'm deeply concerned that the governor's current course on increasing taxes will cost our state more jobs and will have a negative impact. I'm also deeply concerned that Governor Brown and Secretary Matthew Kait of the Department of Corrections are dumping far too many high-risk sex offenders in Los Angeles. I know that we can do better. I strongly encourage all of our good citizens to vote in this coming election. Please visit the website, ourcandidates.info, or you can also visit mervynevans.com. And let me share with you that I'm deeply concerned that Los Angeles moves forward in a positive direction, and, Mr. Wesson, I cannot be more confident that we have a more capable public policy leader than you at the helm. Thank you again.
No, thank you, sir. Okay, Dr. Williams, followed by Dow House Dude. Morning, Doc.
Good morning. Dr. Tom Williams, L.A. 32 Neighborhood Council Board Member and Concerned Citizen of El Sereno. City of Los Angeles, you have a renegade department, one that doesn't have any policy other than what is set by this council. The L.A. Department of Transportation is a conspiring member of part of the MTA and the Caltrans in the destruction of 200 houses within El Sereno, the infamous Caltrans corridor. They want, and they have supported, Caltrans and MTA selection of an alternative that will convert the local street of Lowell or Sheffield to an arterial. And, but you guys had a motion that 710 was not supposed to go on Zone 2, Zone 3 on the surface? Well, they have an alternative, and L.A. DOT has supported the alternative to convert Sheffield or Lowell into an arterial. It's the old slip road of the 710 Meridian. So we're quite concerned about, the city council apparently has no policy jurisdiction over the Department of Transportation within the city of Los Angeles. They are also supporting the Zone 2 tunnel alternative, that is, going from El Sereno over to Glazal Park. And that was also voted against by the city council. Zone 2 is the alternative that's being proposed. So we don't know how to get at the L.A. DOT. They have no board. They have really no effective commission. So we're quite concerned about how the L.A. City Council policies in a council resolution are not being employed by the Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Doc. So we'll have Dow House Dude, followed by John Walsh, followed by Arnold Sacks. So John Walsh and Arnold Sacks, begin to make your way to the podium. Yes, Dow House Dude?
Yes. I'm respectfully going to ask Mr. Alarcon permission to use him as an example. I guess he didn't hear me, so it must be a yes. He informed me just a few meetings ago that his own son is homeless. How can we have a city council with a member that's going to Sacramento having a homeless son? The city, the chief of police of Fullerton had a homeless son, and he was killed by the Fullerton police. Two policemen are in trial for murder. Why is homelessness such a big problem? It is a huge problem. When it affects even the city council and the chief of police. We need to devise a system where nobody gets hurt if everybody has a home and has no landlord. Who are these landlords that are holding on so tight to everything that nobody else can have a place? We need to redo, we do need to fix something that is broken. Politicians like to say, "I'm in office to fix the government because it's broken." Well, it is damn broken because people do not own the real estate. We need to change the real estate laws. And I need help on doing that. Mr. Alarcon, I need an office and...
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. John Walsh, followed by Arnold Sacks. Mr. Walsh, good morning.
John, good morning. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org. Visit us, a million successful server requests a year. And we'd like to point out another rape in Hollywood on Whitley Boulevard, 11% increase in rapes, according to ComStat figures. Eric Garcetti doesn't care because when the women are minorities, when they're Hispanic, no one gives a damn. When they're white women who are raped on Melrose, it's a big deal. We'd like to say that our website endorsements are out, and we're asking everybody, Prop 28, vote no. It is a Trojan horse. And we would like to make this moment right now to challenge Willie Brown, who, if this passes in 2014, will return as Speaker of the Assembly. We are challenging Willie Brown to a debate, mano a mano, John Walsh versus Willie Brown. He doesn't have the guts to come. He doesn't have the guts to face me on the radio in a radio debate. The most important thing here, and I don't know if we're going to be talking about it, if we're going to have a chance on the plastic bags. The plastic bags, what you're going to do today is going to save children's lives, not just fish, children. Because this is what happens to children. Don't do this at home. They do this, they can't breathe, I can't breathe now, and they die. I'm telling you, I almost fainted right then. Now, I'm telling you right now, we need bags, 99 cent only. We want these bags. We don't want children, do not do this at home, kids. Not that any child will be foolish enough to watch city council. I'm telling you right now, let's keep the bags out. Let's save the fish. Let's save the children. Over 50 children die a year from plastic bags. ThatparentsHollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Arnold Sacks, Arnold Sacks, followed by Reverend Dr. Juan Carlos Mendez and Denise Scott. Please come forward.
Just thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks.
Good morning, Arnold.
Congratulations to Councilman Design for his news conference yesterday regarding the county assessor and the fiasco that's going on over there. But just out of curiosity, since the DWP, in their last transfer, transferred $8 million less, $250 million, this past year versus $258 million the previous fiscal year, an $8 million reduction, and since that transfer is based on what property tax value is for DWP, would there be a connection, or would you be concerned about that $8 million, Councilman Design? Because the council as a whole has decided that $21,000 is too much to spend on televising council meetings to San Pedro and the valley. But $7 or $8 million, that is the differential from the DWP, is not worth investigating. So how come, oh, we got to worry about the county board of supervisors and the county assessor? That's a black hole that could go on forever. And that being said, congratulations on the council's action of eliminating, according to this story on the 22nd, 400 vacant positions. Why not 600 vacant positions or 800 vacant positions? They're all budgeted. How exactly does that work? Again, you're looking at $21,000 to stop televising but continuing presentations, but you're eliminating vacant positions. Now, are those vacant positions because of retirements, or are those vacant positions that are budgeted? There's no explanation because it's only public money.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Scott, you can come forward. And then we'll go to Dr. Juan Carlos Mendez. Ms. Scott?
Justice, oh, yeah. Good morning, City Council. I still don't have all of my stuff together, but I know that whoever represents Skid Row, they full of, whatever. In any event, I woke up this morning thinking Dr. Martin Luther King did not get his head blown off for us to live in continued poverty and racism. Now, we got 20 million illegals in this country, and we have no room for Americans. I mean, soldiers, vets, I mean, disabled people. So I know you guys, you know, got your little thing going, you got your politic thing going, playing with people, but somebody needs to come and see about Skid Row. Everybody's not all cracked up down there. We got some decent people down there. We need some attention. This is an election year, sir. We don't want nobody else in the White House, and we're going to continue to be like this. So like I said, John Fitzgerald Kennedy went down for civil rights, Robert Francis Kennedy, they took a bullet. I'm thinking Mr. Obama don't want that bullet, but we must bring, we have 20, like I said, 20 million illegals. Illegal means illegal, sir. They lock my ass up, you know? But, so go take care of this problem. I'm sure we have plenty of housing and plenty of jobs. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could get Dr. Juan Carlos Mendez, followed by Daniel Garcia, followed by President Marvin Good morning, sir.
Good morning. As you mentioned, my name is Reverend Juan Carlos Mendez. I'm here representing a coalition of 5,000 churches together with my African-American, Asian brothers, and we're not happy with the way the city districts have been divided. You are doing what in biblical times the Pharisees and the Sadducees did to the lepers, and you're putting all the poor people in certain portions of the city. That is ungodly, that is unfair, and discriminatory. I understand that you are concerned about being in office, but we're more concerned about the rights of people and people getting a fair treatment in this city. So I urge you to reconsider the district boundaries. Leave them as it is. We're making progress in different parts of the city, so don't bother us. We're not bothering you, so don't bother us.
Okay, Daniel. In fact, since you're, Mr. Garc, in fact, Daniel, can you hold on and just let me run through? Okay, so Daniel, I'll be right with you if you could just wait. Okay, so President Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President, and to all the members of City Council. I am Marvin Davis, President of Baptist Ministers Conference. But today, we are a united coalition of churches. We have the African-American community churches representing 2,000 churches, the Korean community representing 1,300 churches, the Latino community that is representing 1,000 churches. We want you all to know, as relates to this redistricting, what has happened to our churches that are in this community. We have not been informed as relates to what has been taken from us. It's been articulated by many of you what has been given to this community. You have not given nothing to us. You have taken away from our community. We have come up through the ashes. We have certainly demonstrated economic development as relates to our community. Services is what we need. You might be comfortable where you are, even seeking another office. You might be out of this office within the next four years, but what's going to happen to our community? The people are going to be coming to our churches for services. There are needs. People are afflicted, they are addicted. We address these issues every day, not just on Sundays, not just election time, but every day. We are going from here, we're going to the mayor, to say to the mayor, veto this redistricting. Obviously, you have not done your due process, you have not done your due diligence. It's affecting the majority that voted 13. You are affecting the 9th, the 8th district. When you come back to our community, when you come back to our churches, seeking a higher vote, seeking to another office, we're going to remember it. We're going to remember. You cannot do this to our community. Every other district of the 13 is satisfied except the 8th and the 9th district.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, President.
For hearing us out. Thank you, Bill Rosenthal.
Thank you. Bill, you wanted to quickly say something, a quick announcement.
I appreciated your shout-out just then, and I want to thank you for the 60th anniversary we just celebrated of New Bethany Church in Oakwood, and your 25 years as pastor. As you know, I was with you last week, and we were singing and praying, and I just want to give you great... to give you great respect for your leadership in Oakwood and what you've done for the African-American community. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right. I also want to just piggyback as relates to how you fought for your district, which I'm a part of that district.
Okay, pastor, you're pastor, pastor, your time is, your time is up. Your time is up. And Bill, thinking about you praying is fine, we all need to pray, but thinking about you singing is a little scary. So if I could get Pastor Nicholas, if I could get Pastor Nicholas and Edward Jenkins, are you guys finished? Pastor, I still have Pastor Nicholas and Edward Jenkins. And Mr. Garcia, thank you for your patience.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning, sir.
And good morning to the City Council. We're here, I stand with what President Marvin Davis has just said. It's no longer about just the African-American community. We have joined hands with the Asian community and the Hispanic community. And as a religious body, we represent, we represent over five thousand churches. Now, when you think or take that into account, you're talking about a lot of people that we are representing. And I think we're covering all of the council district with over five thousand churches. We are asking you, Mr. President, and the council, we're going to ask the mayor, if you let this go through, to veto what you've done. What we're really asking you to do is to redo it and leave the downtown community in the ninth district. If you take it out, you will make the ninth district the poorest council district of any council district in the country. So please do the right thing. You are in authority. You would not be in authority if God did not allow that. So since you are in authority, he holds you accountable for making the right decision. You don't need to make poor people poorer. So please keep that in mind. Reconsider your vote, so that the mayor would not even have to consider a veto. Leave downtown with the ninth district and leave the eighth district as it is. And may God bless you, and when you in power, and God has put you in power, use that power, because remember, there is no power.
Thank you, pastor, thank you. Mr. Jenkins, please come forward. Daniel Garcia, right after Mr. Jenkins.
President Weston and the City Council, my name is Pastor Edward Jenkins, Victory Baptist Church, moderator of the Los Angeles District Association.
Oh, pastor, let me jump in and interrupt you. It didn't say pastor. I definitely would have referred to you as that.
I just put down Edward Jenkins.
Okay, okay.
I was Edward Jenkins first. All right. I appreciate the opportunity to address the Los Angeles Honorable City Representatives. I'm not an expert in city politics, but I fail to understand the benefit that the proposed redistricting plan provides for all the citizens, all the citizens in the Los Angeles community. It appears that this most recent proposal only benefits the districts that voted for it. I understand the most basic urge to take care of you and yours, but I fail to understand and appreciate the apparent disregard for the well-being of others. The City Council is really a single unit with many parts that must work in harmony to benefit just not the districts that you represent, but the entire whole city. As council members, you know better than I, you have great power, and your actions impact countless powerless. There are many people that aspire to sit where you sit, but God has appointed and anointed you to be where you are today. Therefore, you have a higher moral calling, and you are expected to manifest compassion and concern for all the people. You are the representatives of all the people. This is not the NFL who offers a bounty on those who they can maim. The bounty hunter has no compassion. His goal is to hurt or punish the person on the opposite side of the line of scrimmage. They fail to understand that beneath the shoulder pads and helmets is someone who's supporting a family and is probably voting, or probably providing for his age parent. The actions you've taken are not about fellow politicians, it's about people, real people that they represent. Beneath those district lines are real people that deserve to live in neighborhoods that can grow and prosper. It is not too late to reconsider your actions. Do you really want the people of districts nine and eight to feel they've been marginalized and penalized for reasons unknown?
Thank you.
The decisions that you make today, whether they are-
Thank you, pastor. Thank you, pastor. Thank you, pastors. And before you leave, I appreciate all of you taking the time to come. And basically, I would love to have given you extra time, but we have a time limit, and that's for everyone. So if I were to extend your time, I'd have to extend the time of others. But I know how busy you are, being pastors of churches where you have a lot of souls in need spiritually and also the ones on this side of the River Jordan. So thank you so much for coming. You are always welcome. Thank you all. So if I could get now Daniel Garcia, Michael Carrion, and Henry Marine. Mr. Garcia, it's good to see you, and I appreciate your patience. It just made sense that we take them all as a group. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, City Council. I am Daniel Garcia, I am the City Advocate. I am right now, want to say to you that I have a blog. My blog is called the www dot the advocate page dot com. My blog consists of advocacy that has not done for the City Council and for countywide and so on. You can see also, you may see also my resume, my bio, and so on, in that blog. I am very happy today, because the Obama administration with the housing department made an attempt to, make an attempt to, to actually minimize the step of housing discrimination. You can see on the Justice Department blog, it's there. I want to say congratulations, Obama, President Obama, for imposing the right kind of leadership. And the city needs to have an example, otherwise, the city will fall behind everything else. Thank you very much, and I bless you.
Mr. Garcia, it's always a pleasure to see you. Michael Carrion, followed by Henry Marine. And then our last public general, our last speaker will be Arminak Nurjaniyan. So Arminak, I know you're somewhere out there. I want to see you behind, then get behind Mr. Marine. I call your name, you're not there. I'll give Michael your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrion.
Thank you. I'm here because I'd like to see if anybody here can answer my question. How do valet parkings tell me that I can't park in a meter because it's valet parking? Right outside Jan Perry's district, I called her on Monday, and I'm still waiting for a call back from her. You got a valet parking, comes out, puts it right in the middle of the street, and says, "We're doing valet parking right here on Second Street." In Mr. Garcetti's district, on Sunset in, what's that, Lemoine in Glendale, you got a restaurant there. They put out valet parking, and they block the alleyway where there's public meters and handicap spots, and they put the valet cars in there and block them in. Who do we go to to complain to have something done about this? Meters are for the people who are paying for the meters, not for a business to go out there and take them over. It's embarrassing when this happens right across the street, not one block from City Hall, and nobody does nothing about it. You allow people to just take the money out of the city coffer and put it in their private pockets, and you do nothing about it. Yet the mayor wants to raise parking tickets? Let him come out here in the middle of the night, try to park in his own car, not in a city vehicle, and see if he's going to have valet parking. It's unfair to the taxpayers that you don't take anything, you don't do anything about it, and I wish somebody from Mr. Garcetti's office comes and see me, because this is unacceptable. I called Mrs. Perry's office twice. I know I'm not going to get a call back from her, because I called her on several other things, and she won't call back. And she's running for mayor. You guys are in here, listen to what I'm saying. Call Mrs. Perry's office, and she calls you back. She can't do nothing as a councilperson. You think she's going to do something as a mayor?
Michael.
That's unfair. I've called, and she won't return my call, so I'm saying it now. Thank you.
Who does call you back, Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Carrion, thanks for that. We've been working actually in Hollywood. I can only respond briefly, because our city attorney will, I'm sure, remind me we have a valet ordinance for that legal one. Thanks for giving the heads-up on Sunset and Lemoine. We'll send somebody out there this evening. Appreciate it.
Okay, then, Mr. Labange.
If you could inform them, the Department of Transportation has a commission appointed by the mayor that you could go before, and you make a very good point about, or sometimes illegal valet zones. You could go appear before them, and they should act. And I'm sure Jaime de la Vega hears this now.
Okay, Mr. Marine, Henry, good to see you.
Yeah, I'm still looking for, to remind you people, that in this State of the Union, construction work, maintenance and maintenance work is subject to prevailing wage laws and state and federal tax laws. MOU thirty-five and sixty-two shows in black and white how much the good people with names from A to Z agreed to shelter from the pay of others and me. However, in the April twenty-seventh meeting, Budget Committee meeting, at the forty-second minute, Mr. Our C A O agreed to misrepresent the Mr. Mitch, our Budget Committee, that MOU thirty-fives and sixty-twos are not city employees, contrary to my W-two form, W-four form, and my government paychecks. So what's your problem? You wrote all this writing for us to read to take the money, but you can't read the writing to give it back. What's happening here? You know, Trader Joe's here, you know what we're going to do, Trader Joe's? I can just come here to N W A and negotiate with administrators that failed service in the first place. I got no C D eight representative, representation. I've got no union, local union seventy-eight representation, so I got to do it myself. Here I am, a first party, because you're the third parties in the first place. I'm the principal worker here and taxpayer here. So you're just the third parties, when we're going to start negotiating this thing? And you made the union the third parties in the second place? And you got, each one of those MOUs got a ninety-day option to withdraw from conspiracy and get the money turned back over where you took it from in the first place. Thank you.
Okay, Henry, good to see you. Mr. Nurjaniyan, good to see you, sir.
Yeah, thank you so much. Good morning, respectable City Council members. Good morning, fellow Angelinos. My name is Arminak Nurjaniyan, and I'm a liberal Democrat and human rights advocate. I ran for the seat of California State Assembly from South Central Los Angeles, fifty-ninth Assembly District. And actually, I promised to raise taxes fifty percent against wealthy individuals and gasoline selling corporations, oil producer manufacturers, in order to replenish state coffers, in order to increase social spending, create new jobs. I promised to create new jobs by, with government contracts, you know, in the areas of construction, security, high technologies. But we need to raise taxes against at least fifty percent against gasoline selling corporations and wealthy individuals in order to distribute wealth, in order to create new jobs. Also, will provide six-month pregnancy leave for all Californian women. And actually, I also promise to make same-sex marriage law of land, in order to uphold civil rights of sexual minorities. I ask the vast majority of Hispanic and Black voters to vote for me, as I am the most progressive and liberal candidate of all. I promised amnesty for all those D M V applicants who will receive their driver licenses without disclosing their immigration status. They're actually very important for most applicants. I also promised to introduce a comprehensive ban against so-called medical marijuana dispensaries as they rip off substance abusers. Also, fifty-six percent of Californian voters voted against Proposition Nineteen and voted down legalization of medical marijuana. And so, but I asked City Council members to introduce hardcore ban against what's so-called medical marijuana dispensaries that make Angelinos homeless. And I also ask City Council members to raise taxes against all producing, manufacturing two dollars a barrel, in order to replenish city coffers and avoid costly layoffs of police officers and firefighters.
Thank you, thank you, that closes general public comment. Mr. Carratz and Mr. Weezer, Mr. Buscayino is here, and he does have one quick presentation. I would like for us to allow him to go first. We will then take up item ten. I believe item ten will take a little longer than five minutes. So if we could do the presentation, and then we'll get to item ten. Joey B., are you ready? Okay, let's get it done. The councilman from the fifteenth district, Joe Buscayino.
All right, come on up. Come on, big smiles, okay? Big smiles. Come on up. Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Mark, come on up. All right. Thank you, colleagues. It gives me a great pleasure, colleagues, to introduce the San Pedro Peninsula Y M C A Youth in Government Program. Let's give them a round of applause and a warm welcome. Don't they look great, our students here? We love you. Colleagues, this here is the next generation of leadership. These are the ladies and gentlemen standing here before me, from the San Pedro Y M C A, San Pedro Peninsula Y M C A Youth in Government. These participants have exemplified themselves to be driven, goal-oriented, young men and women. They are known for being community servants. Participants often take an active role in community projects such as cleanups, weeding baseball fields, and feeding the less fortunate. They are known for giving back to their communities and interacting with the local, their local representatives when needed in order to get things done. The Youth in Government Program reaches its peak in Sacramento. Some of my colleagues who served in Sacramento have seen this program come alive at our state capitol. They serve in Sacramento over Presidents' Day weekend, and there, real government steps aside, and the teen delegates take over, using the historic halls, chambers, and offices of our state capitol, Supreme Court, and governor's office. In fact, I've been a part of the bill hearing night, that it's a bill hearing night that selects numerous bills that they propose once they're in Sacramento. And year after year, the Youth in Government Program has worked to build values-based leadership and civic engagement in young people in order to strengthen participation in our democracy. And on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I present to you this certificate recommendation. Joining me is Mark Linscom, a dear friend. I'm so proud of you, Mark, I love you. And we went to high school together. It's great to see you involved with these young kids, not young kids, teenagers. Yes, sorry, teens. Erica Dolan, Lauren Fierro, Freddie Quintana, and Paula Falsetta. And so come on up, we'll take a quick photo. And some of the students here joining me today, Allison Delconte, Daniel Politas, Derek Trager, Tatiana Cora, Johnny Reed, Nikki Lynn Bosnich, Heaven Saunders, and Nathan Cole. Give them a round of applause. Thank you so much. We're so proud of you. Take a quick photo. Come on up, be nice.
Mr. Englander.
I just wanted to recognize Councilman Joey for doing this today. Councilman Joey, that's what we're going to stick with now, right? Instead of Steve, Mr. President. And, you know, as the media past chair of the North Valley Family Y M C A, I recognize all the programs and have been really involved. all the programs and have been really involved in, not only the parent and child programs, but we started, in fact, three years ago, we said we want to feed families at Thanksgiving through the YMCA, and we said we're gonna feed 500 families, and the last year we stepped it up to 800, and then this year, we've challenged the community to step up, where we deliver 1,000 baskets with turkeys to families that otherwise wouldn't be having Thanksgiving. So, your young adults behind you are next leaders here around the horseshoe, unless they hopefully are a little more successful than that and do something to contribute to society a little more. Wanted to thank you all for everything you do for the community and for the YMCA and for the state of California. It sounds like a great program you guys have going on there, and thanks for bringing them in, appreciate it.
Mr. Labange, quickly.
Joe, there's nothing like youth, and gather around Joe right there. That's the shot, that's leadership. I had the fortune of being on Mayor Bradley's Youth Council, you're on Joe, Big Joe's Youth Council now, you're gonna help in the future, give him a big hand.
All right, thanks, Tom. You're welcome. Come on.
Thank you, Mr. Buscayino. Okay, now the moment that many of you have been waiting for. Item 10. Mr. Carets, Mr. Weezer. This is the way I think we should proceed with this item. It's my understanding that it already satisfied the public testimony requirements, but because of the importance, and at the request of the Chair and the maker of the motion, we're going to have 15 minutes from the support group, 15 minutes for those who oppose. Every public speaker will be given one minute. We're gonna start off with the support, and then I will defer to Mr. Weezer, and then to you, Mr. Carets, the maker of the motion. With that said, if I could get Julia Lewis-Dreyfus, Sharon, Sharon, I can't, Sarah, Sarah, I can't quite get the last name, so you're gonna have to come up and help me, and Leslie Tamira. So, Ms. Dreyfus, welcome to your Los Angeles City Hall.
Thank you very much, thank you. Good morning, Council President Weston and distinguished council members. It's my great privilege to be here this morning as a citizen of Los Angeles and a board member of Heal the Bay. I have a quiz for everyone to take today. What is hideously ugly, gigantically dangerous, and outrageously expensive, and yet we still use it every single day in Los Angeles? No, it is not the 405. It is plastic bags. And unlike most other ugly, dangerous, and expensive things, we can get rid of these things overnight. Did you know that 25% of the world already lives in a community where single-use plastic bags are against the law? And did you know that plastic bag policies actually work? In LA County and the city of Calabasas, 90% of customers are bringing their own bags to shop. So, does LA really want to lose to Calabasas and Oklahoma City in the same week? I don't think so. Speaking of lakes and waterways and the ocean, our ocean, 60 to 80% of ocean pollution is plastic. And remember, when we pollute the ocean, we don't just wreck the beach and kill some fish, we destroy a resource that is basic to our economy, we destroy jobs, we destroy, we cost taxpayers money.
Ms. Dreyfus, I hate to do this.
Yes.
And I would love to give you
No, you didn't, no, 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 I understand.
More time, but I can't give you
You can't, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna end it by just saying thank you very much.
I appreciate you coming.
And I'm here to encourage Los Angeles to move forward with a comprehensive bag ban today. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's keep it down, let's keep it down, and I wish you good luck in your new series. Veep, yes. Identify yourself and rock.
Hi, my name is Sarah Sikich, I'm the Coastal Resources Director for Heal the Bay. I don't know how I follow the veep, but I'll do my best. Plastic bags are harmful to our environment, they blight our communities, and threaten wildlife. California taxpayers spend an estimated $25 million annually to collect and landfill this waste. It's time for LA City to take action. Over 45 municipalities in California have acted against single-use bags, and I want to call LA one of those proud cities. Unfortunately, voluntary programs don't work. LA County tried it, we didn't see success. It's really important that the city take action to ban plastic bags and address the paper bag issue as well comprehensively. California has the most reusable bag manufacturers in any states in the nation, and we need to move towards those green jobs. I hope that today you become the largest city in the US to act to ban single-use bags. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie. Followed by Bill, Bill Hickman, and Paula Waxman. Yes, good morning.
Leslie Tammonin here. I just want to say that I know Assembly, Councilwoman Jan Perry has introduced a motion to address environmental justice concerns, and these issues were addressed in the Board of Public Works Environmental Review, and I urge you to let that vetting process stand. I also would like, with your indulgence, Council President, to cede the time, rest of my time to Madison Eidinger, who took off school today to be here.
Can I move my bag? Hi, I'm Madison Eidinger, and I'm 11 years old. I'm a Girl Scout and a junior lifeguard. I also try to protect the environment in every way possible. Plastic bags are very bad for the environment. I'm a kid and I can understand how people can use reusable bags, so I help this, I hope this council full of grown-ups can help, can help the people, can help these people underst, to understand too. Thank you.
Bill Hickman and, does it sound craggy? Craig, come on up.
Hello, Council, my name is Bill Hickman with the Surf Rider Foundation, and today is the day for the city of Los Angeles to move forward with a plastic bag ban. You have had a series of public hearings and meetings, we've heard all the arguments, appreciate the leadership from Councilmember Carets and others on this very important issue. You've heard all the arguments, you know it's the right thing to do. I'd like to submit photos from the LA River Basin to remind all the council members of why we are here, showing the plastic bag pollution. We have over 300 more signatures of local support to add also. And finally, I'd like everyone who's in support to briefly and quietly stand up to show your support for the plastic bag ban today. This is your community showing the support, please do the right thing and ban the plastic bags. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, my name is Paula Waxman, and I am on the board of the South Robertson Neighborhoods Council, and we are in favor of this ban. I know that you appreciate the fact that a ban on single-use plastic bags will affect the everyday lives of all citizens of Los Angeles, so an ordinance like this needs basic grassroots support. I'm here today to remind you of the support for a ban on plastic bags from 26 other neighborhood councils like mine, who collectively represent 1,67,049 stakeholders in Los Angeles, that's more than a quarter of the city. I have come to assure you that we wholeheartedly support your efforts to get rid of the plastic bag, and in the process, protect our rivers, oceans, and the creatures that live within them. Please approve an ordinance that mirrors the LA County model and phases out plastic bags. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much. Our next group of speakers, I'd like to come on up to the microphone, we have Jim Craig, Lisa Boyle, and Hillary Gordon, come on up. That's Jim Craig, Lisa Boyle, and Hillary Gordon. Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you, I'm Jim Craig, I'm the Director of Green Vets LA, and these are my troops over here representing the Green. We are veterans work-training charity designed to create jobs in Los Angeles. I founded the program to give our veterans, some of whom are homeless, a chance to learn to trade, to join the workforce, and now to serve their community by saving the environment. Orders for cloth reusable shopping bags like, from city bands like Santa Monica, expanded our program and, most importantly, created jobs for our vets. Sewing bags is a labor-intensive process. When you give us an order for 100,000 cloth bags, you've just created jobs for 20 sewers for five to six months. One machine in a plastic bag factory employing only two operators will produce 100,000 bags in less than an hour. The number of jobs lost in the plastics industry will be dwarfed by the hundreds to thousands of jobs created. And because locally-made bags are safer for our environment and our ocean, there's evolved the ban for bags created
Thank you, Mr. Craig, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lisa Boyle. Lisa Boyle and Hillary Gordon, come on up. That'll be followed by David Nahai.
Good afternoon, my name is Hillary Gordon, I'm the Chair of the Zero Waste Committee for the Angeles Chapter of the Sierra Club, and I'm here representing our 40,000-plus members who live, work, and/or shop in the city of LA. The Sierra Club strongly supports a single-use bag ban for the city of Los Angeles, and we are thrilled that this motion has finally reached the full City Council. Simply put, we need to move away from assuming that disposability is a good thing and that the environmental costs of convenience can be ignored. Banning single-use bags will require that we change some habits, but as we all know, when habits are bad, we should break them. In this case, that should not be hard to do. Reusable bags have become ubiquitous in stores and are often very free or inexpensive and pay for themselves after just a few uses. In environmental terms, they pay for themselves immediately, and that's a cost we should all be willing to bear. I just wanted to cede the last few seconds to Zola from Archer School.
My name is Ola Berger-Schmitz, I have a petition from the Archer School for Girls, and we support the bag ban, I have the signatures here. We want our generation to have a voice in this.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Lisa Boyle.
Hello, I'm Lisa Cosboyle, I'm a co-founder of Plastic Pollution Coalition, and today I represent the Earth Summit Alliance. We're taking the issue of plastic pollution to the Rio Earth Summit this June, and at this international gathering on the environment, we will be talking about plastic bags and how 25% of the world's population has already banned them. I would like to submit this document from the UN on plastic pollution. The UN has called for the banning internationally of plastic bags, and if you want to know more, go to stopplasticpollution.org. And the rest of my time goes to Marcus Erickson of Five Gyres.
So, I studied plastic in the world's oceans, I got off a boat two days ago in Tokyo, having sailed from Marshall Islands, 2,600 miles to Tokyo. We collected samples along the entire route, 21 samples in all, every 100 miles, I found plastic in every one. I've gone North Pacific six times now, looking for plastics. From California to Japan, the ocean is seeded with microplastic particles.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, David Nahai. After Mr. Nahai, we'll have Sheri Akers and Sarah Shealy, come on up, Sheri Akers and Sarah.
Good morning, council members, thank you so much for the opportunity to address my remarks to you today in support of the plastic bag ban. The calculation that you have to make today is a simple one. On the one side, you have the forces of those who want to continue to reap profits from a product that is obsolete and unnecessary. On the other side, you have the overwhelming weight of reason, decency, and responsibility. This is not a complicated issue. 48 other cities in the United States, 40 other countries have already done this. At a time when plastic pollution is causing more plastic than plankton in certain parts of the Pacific Ocean, we have a responsibility to step up. Plastic harms our environment, it is a threat to the coastal economy, it is a danger to marine life, and it is an unconscionable burden on our taxpayers who have to foot the cost of cleanups year after year. Please vote in favor of the ban, thank you.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Sheri Akers, I'm co-chair of the Mar Vista Community Council Green Committee. We passed a ban, we passed a motion supporting this ban in December of 2010. When I was a kid, our skies were brown from smog, we legislated to change that, this is another form of pollution, and we can do that as well. I'm gonna concede half my time to representatives from the Schumash Indians who would like to speak also.
Hello, my name is Louisa, I am Schumash. Our people, along with the Tongva people, have been here for a recorded 14,000 years. At this time, when we are living in a very, very crucial time, an age that we will be defined as the age of plastic, we cannot afford to continue to do this to all living things on this earth. It is our responsibility, and I urge you, as leaders of this community in Los Angeles, where there is 2.5% more plastic particles than plankton on our coast.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker.
Good morning, my name is Sarah Sheehy with the California Grocers Association. There have been many comments about banning plastic today, so I wanted to focus my comments on the importance of the mandated charge for paper. The grocery industry is very comfortable with the plastic bag ban mandated charge for paper model so many jurisdictions have embraced. Without this mandated charge for paper, customers will move from plastic to paper, costing our stores significant revenue and not incentivizing reusable bag use. The mandated charge is crucial to promote reusable bag use, give customers a low-cost option for a bag for unplanned purchases, and protect our stores. We appreciate tremendously the council's leadership in working with our industry to do the right thing environmentally. We just urge you to mandate the 10-cent charge for paper as quickly as possible. Thank you again for working with us through this process.
Okay, Amy Smart, Sharon Lawrence, and Rachel LaFier. Please come on up, that's former line behind the microphone, appreciate your cooperation.
Good morning, council members. My name's Amy Smart, and I've been a member of, I mean, sorry, I've lived in Los Angeles, was born and raised here. I've done 18 years of beach cleanups with Heal the Bay, 18 years. It is time to ban the plastic bag. I would like to turn the rest of my time over to Dan Jacobson from Environment California.
Thank you very much, members of the council. For years, volunteers and activists from Environment California have been going door-to-door and standing on street corners to educate people about the importance of banning plastic bags, not only in the city of Los Angeles, but in the state of California. And I want to present to you today formally the thousands of petitions that we've collected here from people all over the city of Los Angeles, saying that it's time to ban plastic bags and it's time to do it now. Thank you very much.
Sharon Lawrence? Sharon Lawrence? Sharon Lawrence? No Sharon Lawrence? Then, is that Rachel? LaFier? Good morning.
Good morning, Kirsten James with Heal the Bay. I'm gonna speak purely quickly and then cede some of my time. Obviously, we're here in very strong support of moving forward with this measure. I've been before you many times before, and today is the day we need to take action. I did want to address the low-income issue briefly. The county ban includes low-income areas like Florence Firestone, Willowbrook, Athens, and East LA. These areas are all considered low-income, yet they are living okay with the county ban. By exempting these areas, it's basically saying low-income people don't care about the environment, and that is inappropriate. We encourage you to move forward with the ban as proposed or the county model.
Good morning, my name is Jenny Romer, and I am the founder of PlastikBagLaws.org. I work with cities to encourage them through the process and avoid litigation by, from the plastics industry. I encourage the city to follow the county ordinance, the county model. The county spent years developing their ordinance.
Finish your sentence.
And I believe that the best And I believe that the best route would be for the, for L.A. city to follow the county's model and make sure that that time was worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Okay, let's keep it down, guys. Now we're going to go to the opposition. I'm going to call three people at a time. You have a minute each. Donna Dempsey, Erin Grand, or Grande, Chandler Hadraba. Please go on.
I am Donna Dempsey with the American Progressive Bag Alliance, and I'm here on behalf of the 30,000 American families who are supported by the plastic bag and recycling industries. We oppose this proposal because bans will not help the environment or reduce litter. Plastic retail bags are less than 1% of litter, according to the U.S. EPA. San Francisco reported that plastic bag litter was 0.6% before their ban. One year after their ban, litter was 0.64%. The facts are not getting out there. The staff report was incomplete and inaccurate. The Bureau of Sanitation information was complete junk science with no citations. You do not have the appropriate information or ingredients to make an informed decision today. Basically, the dough is uncooked, and you are feeding it to your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, let's keep it down, please, or it'll shorten the time of your speakers. So Erin?
Hi, I'm Erin Grande, and I work at Command Packaging in Los Angeles. I urge you to vote no because this ordinance will not solve anything. The facts are clear from other cities and countries that this ban will only create different problems that are worse than what we have. Plastic bag litter is a minuscule percent of litter, and plastic bags are a very small part of our landfills. Plastic bags are often reused by consumers for many things, so banning them means consumers will simply buy plastic bags, which is what happened in Ireland. If paper bags are not banned, consumers will simply pay 10 cents, and the plastic usage will switch to paper bags. For those who do convert to use reusable bags, their choice will be a plastic polypropylene bag made in China that is thrown away when it gets dirty. Australia tried this, and they now have a landfill problem because of the billions of cheap reusable bags that consumers buy and discard each year. The U.S. has already imported close to 5 billion plastic polypropylene reusable bags. That's 15 bags for every man, woman, and child.
Thank you, thank you. Chandler? Okay, guys, keep it down. Chandler, followed by Kathy Brown, followed by Letitia Salcedo. Chandler?
Good day, council members. I'm Chandler Hadraba, board member of the Western Plastics Association, which represents manufacturers of plastic products as well as related companies in Northern America. Some of our members are here today and will present to you how this proposed ban will directly impact and lead to loss of jobs right here in Los Angeles County. If the goal is to decrease the production of plastic bags, some of our members actually believe that by banning them, you will lead to increased sales because these bags are often reused and now have to be replaced with bags for dog waste, et cetera. Banning the bags does not solve the marine waste or debris problem. Moreover, under the proposed ordinance, as was stated before, you're most likely to see polywoven bags from China to be the most likely option. And according to the environmental impact report prepared by Los Angeles County, it's proven that scientifically, you must use these bags at least 100 times to achieve an environmental benefit, whereas a plastic bag requires only three usages. There are other options possible. Here's a sample bag that has been made from discarded bags by a revo cycle out of Oakland, California.
Thank you. Kathy Brown, followed by Letitia Salcedo, followed by Martha Valles, or Valles. Kathy Brown.
Good morning, all of the city council members. My name is Kathy Brown. I am not a celebrity. I am general manager of Crown Poly, and I employ 300 people that I consider to be celebrities. These are hard-working Angelenos, who many of them are here today, but most of the average Angelenos who are hardworking, who are working to put food on the table, cannot be here today to express the fact that they want to be able to have a choice to use plastic bags. Everyone in this room is free today, including our employees, by the way, to purchase and use these reusable bags, should they choose to. The city council does not need to mandate consumer behavior. These are available, these can be used, but if we want to use these, if we want to reuse these as a trash bag, please allow us the right to choose to use a plastic bag, a paper bag, or this bag. The L.A. City Council does not need to dictate public policy in this way to mandate consumer behavior. Let the market dictate consumer choice. Thank you.
Okay, guys, keep it down. Keep it down, keep it down. Again, I don't see Martha Valles, followed by Alejandro Ortega. Go on, Ms. Salcedo.
Mi nombre es Letitia Salcedo.
My name is Letitia.
Salcedo.
Salcedo.
Yo estoy aquí para que voten no en contra de las bolsas de plástico.
I'm here to ask you to vote no against the plastic bags.
Si la prohibición de bolsas despromulgada y dan el negocio a las bolsas cocidas.
If you prohibit these plastic bags and you approve the sewn bags.
Que son importadas de China.
That they import from China.
Pondría en el peligro el sustento de miles empleados.
You will put under risk the income of so many people.
Las bolsas cocidas son hechas de aceite crudo.
The bags that they sew, they are made of crude oil.
Y no son recyclables.
And they are not recyclable.
Las bolsas plásticas son hechas de gas natural y son recyclables.
Plastic bags are made of natural gas, and they are recyclable.
Las bolsas de camisetas no son el problema. De camiseta? Son de t-shirt.
The bags that are made out of t-shirts are not a problem.
El problema consiste en cómo la gente dispone de ellas.
The problem is how people dispose of them.
Por favor, piensen en nosotros que nos vamos a quedar sin empleo.
Yes, please, think about us. We are going to lose our jobs.
La ciudad de Los Ángeles no está preparada para los desempleados.
City of Los Angeles is not ready for the unemployed.
El porcentaje del desempleo está en un 12%.
The percentage of unemployment is 12%.
El futuro de nosotros está en sus manos.
Our future is in your hands.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Okay, Martha, I need to see Alejandro Ortega, followed by Maria Montes. Before we start on your public comments, if some of you may be paying attention to the clock and you see it, it kind of stops every now and then, that's because we're getting translation, and we're trying to be as fair as we can. So we want to hear in English what they said. It's not that they're getting additional time. It's that we do try to be as equal as we can. So with that said.
Yo me llamo Marta Valles.
My name is Marta.
Valles.
Valles.
Este, yo estoy escuchando que en los ríos hay mucho plástico.
I've been listening that there is so many plastic in the rivers.
Y a mí me gusta mucho andar en bicicleta. A mí me gustaría que fueran y vieran que no nada más es el la bolsa de plástico, sino que hay más cosas que hay de plástico.
I like to, I like to ride a bicycle, and I would like you to go and see that in at the river, they not only have plastic, but they have a lot of different things.
Y hay más cosas que son, que no pueden, que pueden evitar también, que son vasos cucharas o también de comida rápida, es lo que se ve más en el río.
Yeah, they have so many, so much garbage at the river. They have glasses, they have spoons, and they have also articles that they use for fast food. And that's basically what they have the most.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Alejandro Ortega, followed by Maria Montes, followed by Laura Hernandez. So I don't see Ms. Hernandez make her way to the center aisle. Go right ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Alejandro Ortega. I worked for Crown Poly for 10 years. Me and my family, it depends on my jobs and my benefits too. Our bags are being bundled and being replaced for these bags imported from China to U.S. This means that the jobs are going there, but the jobs must be here because we need the jobs right here. Nine bags for this, every man, every woman, and child in the U.S., or 27 per average U.S. household, just like in Australia. This, this bus will become a landfill problem here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Maria Montes, Laura Hernandez, Norma Fiero. Norma, come to the center aisle. In fact, maybe you should just stay there for a minute, Madam Translator.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es María Montes.
Good morning, my name is María Montes.
Yo trabajo en Crown Poly por 16 años.
I've been working at Crown Poly for 16 years.
Bolsas plásticas.
Plastic bags.
Yo es, estoy aquí porque yo, este, no, no, no nos quieren forzar a los residentes de Los Ángeles a comprar una bolsa reusable de China.
Yeah, I'm here because they want to force the citizens of Los Angeles to buy a reusable bag from China.
O pagar 10 centavos por bolsas de papel.
Or to pay 10 cents for a paper bag.
Si se nos olvida la bolsa reusable.
If we forget our reusable bag.
Un costo que residentes de Los Ángeles como yo no podemos pagar.
This is a cost that residents of Los Angeles like me cannot pay.
Todo es muy caro ya.
Everything is already too expensive.
Y tener que pagar también por bolsas.
And in addition to have to pay for a bag.
Aparte de querer quitarnos nuestro trabajo.
In addition of losing our jobs.
A mí no se me hace gusto eso.
I don't think it's fair.
Gracias.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Laura Hernandez, followed by Norma Fiero Abad Durantes.
Mi nombre es Laura Hernandez.
My name is Laura Hernandez.
Trabajo para Crown Poly.
I work at Crown Poly.
Desde siete años.
For seven years.
Y les pido que no me quiten mi trabajo.
And I ask you to not take away my job.
Nosotros, reusamos las bolsas, no las tiramos, la volvemos a usar.
We reuse the bags. We don't trash them away.
Se puede usar los, para los desechos de basura, para los animales, para todo esto lo podemos usar.
Yeah, we can recycle the bags for garbage containers and for other things used with animals.
Porque yo la uso para todo, como para llevar mi lonche, llevarla donde me cuidan a los niños, tengo que echar sus cosas para poder, para todo el uso la bolsa.
I reuse the bag. I use it to take things for my children, for different things. I reuse my plastic bags.
Y por favor les pido que pues no, no la quiten porque si no la quitan pues nos va a afectar mucho.
I please ask you not to prohibit the bags because if you do, it's going to affect us a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Norma Fiero Abad Durantes, Yolanda Fuentes. Yolanda Fuentes, come to the center aisle. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. My name is Norma Fiero, and I also work for Crown Poly for more than five years, and we make plastic bags. And this is the bags that we make in L.A., and this is the bags that they make in China. So please, I'm right here to say, don't send my job to China. Please, save my job. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Buenos días, señores.
Good morning.
Señores, yo les vengo a decir que lo que dicen esas personas que están en contra de las bolsas es algo negativo.
I have to tell you that whatever the people that are against the bags is negative.
Científicamente no está comprobado que las bolsas de plástico sean un, una producto nocivo para los peces, la fauna marina.
Scientifically, they haven't proven that the plastic bags are just poisonous for the marine life.
En el país de Perú murieron 500 delfines hace 15 días. Se difundió una noticia en inglés y español.
Yeah, 15 days ago in the country of Peru, 500 dolphins died.
La semana pasada, en el país de Chile, salieron 2,300 pelicanos muertos, y no fueron causa de las bolsas.
Yeah, in Chile last week, on the news, they showed that 2,300 pelicans died, and it was not because of the plastic bags.
En el sur y el norte de California, se encontraron dos valientes afexiándose con la red de pesca que son de plástico. Ese es un peligro.
In the north and south of California, they found two whales that were affixating because they were trapped within the plastic netting for fishing, and that is a danger.
Hay demasiada especie marina que se está muriendo no por las bolsas de plástico, sino por contaminantes de otras empresas que se tiran desechos al océanos.
So many marine life is dying not because of the plastic bags, but because of the poison that many companies are throwing to the ocean.
Algunos de ustedes han visto los documentales donde quedan aves colgadas de los árboles con cuerda de pescar?
Have you seen some of the documentaries where you see that there are some birds that are hanging from the feet on the trees because they have fishing lines on their, trapped on their feet?
Piensen antes de tomar una decisión incorrecta para la economía de los Angelenos, por favor, les pido.
Please, please think before you take an erroneous decision for the citizens of Los Angeles.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Yolanda Fuentes, Omar Munoz, Alicia Ortiz. So I'd like to see Omar and Alicia.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Aquí está mi doctor.
And my doctor is here. She wants to give time to him.
Hello, my name is Dr. David Simhai. I'm a licensed medical physician in the state of California. As a representative of the medical community, I voice our opposition to the plastic bag ban. Our concern stems from a documented norovirus outbreak in Washington State. This disease outbreak was proven to be spread through a dirty reusable bag. In the recent Journal of Infectious Diseases, a scientific study by the Department of Public Health documented a recent GI norovirus outbreak came from a reusable bag. And I quote, "Environmental contamination with transmission via formates has been documented and also illustrates one of the less obvious hazards of reusable grocery bags. These Chinese-imported bags are not sanitary. They spread disease. This is documented and is a proven fact. Why are you going to put our city residents at risk?" I leave you with one question. Which bag do you want your kids, husbands and wives to be handling every day?
Thank you, doctor. Thank you. Again, Omar Munoz, and the last speaker is Alicia, the last speaker is Alicia Ortiz.
Good morning, sirs. My name is Oliver Munoz, and I work for Crown Poly. It's easier to bring a child and coach him to say stuff about the bags. We, we can all bring our families and tell you that the bags are, are good for, for us. I'm just here to, to ask you to not get rid of the bags so you, you can get rid of a problem, a non-existent problem. Please just help us keep our, our jobs and, and the income for our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Ms. Ortiz?
Hi, my name is Alicia Ortiz. I have worked for Crown Poly for the past seven years. Banning our plastic bag, that's the worst thing you can possibly do. Keeping the paper bag, it's going to waste energy, water, and not only just that, it's going to create more dirtiness. They're going to be, they're not recyclable, they're not reusable. Our plastic bags are. So city council, with all your respect, if you pass the plastic ban, you're turning your back on us as employees, as workers. So if you turn your back on us, with all your respect, then we'll turn your back on us, on you. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, thank you. That is our last public speaker for the opposition. I'd like to call on the chair of the committee, Mr. Weazar, to guide us through what, how we're going to deal with this from this point on.
Pardon me, sirs. Before doing so, I'd like to announce that motions, amended motions 10A and 10B have been circulated and are before council for their consideration.
Okay, Mr. Weazar.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And what I will do is just quickly outline the action of the committee. And secondly, there is a amendment, 10A, that should that be adopted, together with a committee report, what we will be adopting today. And before I go on, I want to thank all the council members who've been involved with bringing us to this point. Councilmember Corretts, Councilmember Garcetti, Councilmember Reyes, and others who have asked that we move this swiftly. When I became chair of the Energy and Environment Committee back in March, I, one of the priorities for the committee was to agendize this item after I had been languishing in committee for some time. I want to thank the Bureau of Sanitation, the Board of Public Works, and others for giving us the information we needed in order, in order for us to make sure, to ensure we had the proper information so that we could move forward and make a decision. For me personally, I thought moving forward with the plastic ban was the right thing to do for the city of Los Angeles. We saw the county of Los Vimos a la condición de Los Ángeles y a muchas otras municipalidades que habían avanzado en prohibiciones similares y fue hora de que la ciudad de Los Ángeles moviese en esa dirección. Lo que nos queda hoy es una solicitud que, después de que se adopte la ordenanza o la fecha de la implementación para grandes retiros, como definido en el lenguaje de los informes que definiremos por nuestro bureau, se hará prohibir las prohibiciones de plastica después de seis meses de la implementación de la ordenanza. Esperamos que esos seis meses se utilicen para la educación y la difusión y un proceso de descanso para los grandes retiros para deshacerse del stock que tienen en mano. Para el papel, el papel permanecerá libre durante un año después de la implementación de la ordenanza, esto es, nuevamente para los grandes retiros. Después de ese año, se cobrará un impuesto de diez centavos. Para los pequeños retiros, la prohibición de plastica va a afectar un año después de que se adopte la ordenanza. Y para el papel, estarán libres hasta un año después, en el que se cobrará un impuesto de diez centavos. Inicialmente, fuera del comité, prohibimos, pedimos que el papel fuera prohibido de manera general. Lo que tenemos ante ustedes hoy es un informe de progreso de dos años que volverá al alcalde después de la implementación de la ordenanza para no solo estudiar ese tema sino estudiar todos los temas y cómo funciona nuestra ordenanza. Generalmente, esto es muy similar a las comunidades. Tenemos una diferencia más, que es que después, para los grandes retiros, para el papel, tenemos un periodo de seis meses en el que las bolsas de papel son libres durante seis meses incluso después de que las bolsas de plástico sean prohibidas. La razón por la que hicimos eso en el comité y la razón por la que mi oficina lo presentó es que estábamos preocupados por los residentes de baja sueldo que de repente tendrían que pagar un anual de diez centavos por las bolsas de papel. Pero pensamos que con ese enfoque de paso adicional, ese periodo adicional de seis meses, para que las bolsas de papel sean libres y luego tener el impuesto de diez centavos seis meses después, les daría un tiempo adicional para ajustarse y esto no impactaría a nuestros residentes de baja sueldo tan duro como podría cuando van y obtienen las bolsas por primera vez. Sé que es un poco difícil, pero creo que nuestro Bureau de Sanitización puede explicar esto y responder cualquier pregunta que tengamos. Podríamos pedir que el personal venga y prepare para cualquier pregunta o comentario que nuestro personal pueda tener en este momento, todos podrían por favor venir. Y le pediría a Enrique Zaldivar, nuestro gerente general del Bureau de Sanitización, que haga una breve presentación y añade o evita cualquier cosa que haya explicado dónde estamos hoy. Y cerraremos después de eso, señor presidente.
Señor Weeza, tal vez deberíamos dejar al creador de la motion primero y luego tener a Enrique. Señor Corretz.
Gracias, señor presidente y colegas. Este día ha sido un largo tiempo en el camino. El miembro alcalde Ed Reyes introdujo una motion en 2008 que dijo que si el estado no lo hubiera hecho hasta 2010, deberíamos prohibir las bolsas de plástico para proteger sus y nuestra arroyo amado. El miembro Greg Smith y su antiguo jefe de personal, Mitch Englander, Bill Rosendahl y su personal, todos trabajaron duro en este tema en el mismo tiempo. Y ahora estamos finalmente dispuestos a tomar acción y es hora de hacerlo. Agradezco a Paul Krikorian por apoyar mi motion y su apoyo en este tema. Y agradezco a Jan Perry. Este pasado diciembre, bajo su liderazgo, el Comité de Energía y Envy movió las cosas hacia adelante por wisely dirigiendo al CAO y al CLA y al Bureau de Sanitización a vetar los impactos fiscales sobre nuestros constituyentes y sobre los negocios y a investigar la eficacia de diferentes opciones. Y estoy feliz de decir que ahora hemos estudiado este tema con pensamiento, y con profundidad, y completamente. Y luego el miembro alcalde Weeza tomó el liderazgo de la Energía y Envy. En la segunda reunión, avanzamos en nuestro histórico programa de tarifas de energía solar. A los 30, nos guió a través de algunos compromisos pensadores sobre la prohibición de la plastica, llevando en consideración a todos los residentes de Los Ángeles y aquí estamos hoy. Nos reunimos con la asociación de los mercados y la UFCW, que representa a los trabajadores de los mercados. Discutimos sus preocupaciones y junto con el miembro alcalde Weeza y Garsetti, trabajamos el compromiso que se tiene ante ustedes hoy, prohibir las bolsas de plástico con un impuesto de diez centavos en el papel. Hay 38 millones de razones por las que esta es una propuesta histórica. Somos la mayor ciudad de Estados Unidos para hacerse cargo del problema de las bolsas de plástico. Y agradezco a todas las organizaciones ambientales Heal the Bay, Clean Seas Coalition, Sierra Club, Environment California, Surf Rider Foundation, muchos otros, grupos de estudiantes, activistas, 26 alcaldías de vecindarios que todos están en apoyo hoy. Ahora, en nuestro informe de Energía y Envy, estamos instruyendo al Bureau de Sanitización a informar de nuevo en dos años y ver cómo va. Esperamos que el impuesto de diez centavos virtualmente elimine el uso de bolsas de papel como lo ha hecho en la condición de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Si necesitamos fortalecer nuestra política de bolsas, lo harán en ese punto. En dos años, mi esperanza es que muy pocas bolsas de papel se usen como resultado de esta medida que la prohibición formal que originalmente propuse sobre las bolsas de papel también puede ni siquiera ser necesaria. Apprecito que el alcalde ha trabajado tanto y tan duro en esta política. Y espero a nuestra limpieza de nuestros vecindarios, beautificar nuestra ciudad, proteger nuestros ríos y océanos que nos sostienen todos, y mostrar al mundo que el alcalde de Los Ángeles se une en liderando al país y al mundo hacia un futuro más limpio y más sostenible y más sensible. Y agradezco a todos ustedes.
Gracias, señor Corretz. Okay, manténlo... Manténlo bajo... Manténlo así para que podamos ir a trabajar. Esto no es... ¿Qué es como shows de talentos donde cualquiera que grita más fuerte...? No creo que eso suceda de esa manera. Sé que estás emocionado, ¿por qué no nos dejes debatir este tema? Enrique, breve, rápido, a punto de punto, comentarios.
Gracias, alcalde presidente, y gracias a todos ustedes, miembros del alcalde, por su liderazgo. Es un gran tema, es un tema muy importante. Hemos sido parte de ello durante una buena parte de sus deliberaciones, que han sido largas y profundas. Es una combinación de todo lo que ha pasado en los últimos cinco, tal vez incluso más años. Sé que usted había pedido que trabajáramos con el estado para tratar de traer una política estatal que fuese uniforme y consistente en todo el estado. Eso no sucedió. Usted está saltando y tomando liderazgo sobre el tema, así que gracias y agradecemos al alcalde también. Así que este es un tema que cruza dos medios, medios ambientales, el desperdicio de agua solar y calidad de agua potable. Usted ha dicho muy eloquente que esta política ayudará en nuestros esfuerzos para la calidad de agua con respecto a nuestra compliance con la contaminación de la TMDL, que son muy reales. La calidad de agua en todos nuestros cuerpos de agua, el río Santa Monica, el río de Los Ángeles, es muy real. Es una prioridad alta para ustedes. Y esto también trae a la mente la mentalidad de que es importante conservar los recursos. Así que ir a una bolsa reusable hace exactamente eso. Y es por eso que, usted sabe, nosotros en Sanitización, siendo todo acerca de la recuperación de los recursos y la protección ambiental, este es un día enorme para nosotros. El miembro Weeza articuló la premisa de la propuesta política. Quiero decirles que hasta ahora, creo que ya han reconocido, pero hasta ahora hay más de 30 ciudades en California que ya han adoptado y tienen efecto, en realidad 44 ciudades, 44 ciudades. Así que estaba intentando ser correcto al decir más de 30. Son 44 ciudades que ya han adoptado y aprobado una política similar a lo que usted contempla hoy. Así que eso solo refiere al hecho de que, usted sabe, en la ausencia de un liderazgo estatal, las ciudades actuarán. Así que hemos preparado, como su departamento, un esfuerzo educativo que sé que es muy importante para ustedes, que cuando esta política entra en efecto, es importante que trabajemos con las comunidades y asegurándoles que se acostumbren a la bolsa reusable. Así que hemos preparado un esfuerzo muy profundo para trabajar con la comunidad ambiental, trabajar con las comunidades para asegurar que la política de alejarse de la bolsa de uso único, la bolsa de plástico, es una transición más fácil a la bolsa reusable. Así que quiero asegurarles de eso. Todo nuestro personal ha trabajado muy de cerca con su personal y la comunidad en general. Quiero asegurarles que esto no está siendo hecho en vacío porque hemos trabajado diligentemente durante los últimos cuatro años sobre la propuesta política. Así que creo que con respecto al modelo de la condición, creo que nos proporciona un gran modelo. También nos ayudará con nuestra revisión ambiental, que en el momento en que ustedes tomen una decisión sobre cuál será la política, vamos a ir con la revisión ambiental. Esperamos que ese proceso tome menos de seis meses, para que en algún momento de este año podrán tomar una decisión final sobre la adopción de la ordenanza, todo en este año. Eso es suficiente breve, espero, señor presidente.
Usted obtiene un A. Okay, con eso dicho, señor Garsetti.
Gracias mucho, señor presidente, y gracias a todos los que se han presentado para darle tiempo hoy. Me gustaría realmente dar un saludo, usted puede no haber tenido tiempo para hablar, pero Cheryl Revkin, que está aquí con la Chamber of Commerce Silver Lake, si usted se levante por un segundo, muestra su buen impacto. Y la Chamber of Commerce Silver Lake y hemos trabajado muy de cerca, esta es la Chamber of Commerce que es más preocupada por los trabajos, más preocupada por la salud económica y entiende que esta es una estrategia de fin de semana para el desarrollo económico. Usamos más de 2 mil millones de bolsas de plástico. Cuatro millones de personas usan más de 2 mil millones de bolsas de plástico cada año. Menos del 5% de ellos son reciclados. El resto cagamos nuestros campos de tierra, cagamos nuestros sistemas de drainación, cubrimos nuestros vecindarios. Y hemos oído algunas cosas decir hoy sobre que las bolsas son solo un porcentaje de basura y quiero, al final, preguntar a Andrew Alarcón de nuestro Board de Peticiones Públicas si tal vez señalezca algo sobre cuál es el impacto de los trabajos, así como cuál es el impacto del basura, donde sabemos que en el río de Los Ángeles y en otros lugares es mucho más alto que el 1%, es un número doble y a veces cerca de la mitad de la contaminación que vemos son bolsas de plástico y plásticos. Sabemos que esto no es simplemente un problema ambiental, pero es un problema económico también. Nos costan millones y millones de dólares para que limpiemos estas bolsas cada año. Se disparan por todos nuestros vecindarios, vienen al océano, al río, a nuestros lagos y a todos nuestros cuerpos de agua. Y usted sabe, esto ha sido un gran viaje largo y es hora de que nos encierremos ese viaje hoy. El señor Englander estaba mostrando el registro legislativo y vemos motiones que el señor Reyes y yo, el señor Smith y otros han presentado durante los años. Claramente, esto ha sido la dirección que hemos querido mover y hoy es hora de hacer eso. La motion 10A que he co-introducido con el señor Weeza y apoyado por el señor Corretz es la prohibición que podríamos avanzar con hoy. Y creo que el señor Weeza detalló lo que es en buena medida, así que no repetiré nada allí. Avanzar es peligroso. requiere que la gente tenga coraje. Requiere que veamos, no estamos tratando de convertir a los trabajadores entre sí. Vemos trabajos que pueden venir aquí, vemos esta bolsa aquí, dice "Hace en Estados Unidos". Miramos diferentes formas en las que podemos hacer cosas que aseguren que la gente puede reforzarse. Y parte de nuestro compromiso es asegurarnos de que hagamos trabajos buenos en el futuro y trabajos que van a ser buenos no solo para nuestro medio ambiente, sino para nuestra economía también. Pero debemos tener ese coraje hoy. Cuando leemos el capítulo de las últimas tres décadas en la historia, miraremos atrás de este capítulo y dirán, no puedo creer que vivimos de esa manera. Antes de 1975, no lo hicimos. De repente, hemos tenido unas pocas décadas en las que lo hacemos y la gente está diciendo que de alguna manera no podemos vivir, que se enfermarán, no hay manera de que podamos ir al supermercado, no tendremos ningún conveniencia, ¿cómo limpiamos después de nuestros perros? Los humanos vivieron mucho antes de 1975 y van a vivir mucho después de 2012. Hagamos lo correcto, hagamos esto hecho. Oh, y si quisieran por favor responder a esas preguntas sobre cuál es el impacto de los trabajos en general y algunos de los que han venido aquí han testificado y cuál son los estudios de basura ahora y el costo de eso.
Por supuesto, miembro del alcalde. De hecho, es un placer estar aquí. Ha sido un largo tiempo en el camino. Andrea Alarcón, presidente del Board de Peticiones Públicas. Como todos saben, a finales de año pasado, el Board de Peticiones Públicas apoyó unanimamente la recomendación del alcalde para adoptar una prohibición sobre ambos, sobre el uso de plástico y de bolsas de papel. En total, hay aproximadamente 2.7 millones de bolsas de uso único, 2.7 mil millones de bolsas de uso único distribuidas en la ciudad de Los Ángeles cada año. Y creímos que era la recomendación más ambientalmente sana de hacer. Sin embargo, habiendo hecho esa recomendación, entienden completamente que una iniciativa ampliamente sweepada requiere periodos de transición y un proceso de paso adicional. Así que estoy aquí para decir que el Board de Peticiones Públicas está en plena y con todo el corazón en los motiones anteriores a este alcalde hoy, como presentados por miembros del alcalde Weeza, Corretz y Garsetti. Hubo algunos litros durante nuestras deliberaciones del board. Tuvimos una audiencia de tres y medio horas sobre el asunto, mucho de los cuales se centró en los impactos económicos y de los trabajos de tal prohibición. Y así que, si pudiera, me gustaría tomar una oportunidad para guiarte a través de un documento que señala algunos datos que se ofreció al board en audiencia pública durante el periodo de comentarios públicos. Cada uno de ustedes ha recibido una copia de eso, así que voy a guiarlos brevemente.
Tal vez deberías dejar a los miembros hacer sus preguntas primero y luego, al final, pasar por ello porque tenemos un board completo. Así que, señor Garsetti, y ya estamos a dos minutos por nuestro tiempo.
Correcto. Así que la pregunta que hice, las dos preguntas que tengo que abordar son, ¿cuál es el porcentaje de basura que tenemos de las bolsas de plástico y cuál es el impacto de los trabajos? Si pudiera, por favor, conteste eso concisamente.
Okay, concisamente, voy a responder su última, su primer pregunta, su primer pregunta primero. Estudios de basura muestran que en los basinos de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, el 43% del desechue es basura de plástico. El 19% de ese basura es exclusivamente atribuible a las bolsas de plástico. El basura del río de Los Ángeles es dividida en 34% de la plástica. La conclusión del estudio fue clara que el material de plástico es la categoría más grande de basura urbana, con las bolsas de plástico siendo el componente más grande. En términos de los litros de trabajo, primero, para ser claros, no hay fabricantes de bolsas de comida de plástico en la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Hay, sin embargo, tres fabricantes de esas en la condición de la ciudad de Los Ángeles: Crown Poly, Command Packaging y Omega Extruding. En combinación, hay un total de 750 trabajos de fabricación de bolsas de comida directa en la condición de la ciudad. Dos factores importantes a notar, por lo tanto, son que cada una de estas fabricantes produce productos en adición a las bolsas de comida de plástico y cada una de estas fabricantes exporta y sirve clientela en toda la nación e internacionalmente. En el caso de Crown Poly, por ejemplo, Kathy Brown, su gerente general, quien testificó hace unos minutos, también testificó antes del Board y ofreció esta información. El 65% de su producción general es para bolsas de comida de plástico, lo que significa que el 35% de su producción es para otros fines, otros productos. De su producción de bolsas de plástico, el 90% de esas bolsas de comida de plástico son para uso en otras partes de los Estados Unidos, no aquí en la condición de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Extrapolando esas cifras, las bolsas de plástico en la ciudad de Los Ángeles solo cuentan a aproximadamente el 5% de la producción general de Crown Poly. Similarmente, Command Packaging testificó que producen algunas bolsas de comida, pero principalmente producen otras bolsas y que las bolsas de comida de plástico representan un porcentaje, pero no la mayoría de su negocio.
Okay, all right. Señor Zein.
All right, thank you. Sé que tenemos un gran apoyo por esto, un miembro orgulloso del comité que apoyó esta prohibición. Y puedo recordar que una de las mujeres habló sobre cómo usábamos nuestro aire llenado de humo. Recuerdo cuando usábamos quemar nuestro basura, incineradoras en las bahamas, y así es como quemábamos el basura en el incinerio en la bahama. Una cosa que quiero decir es, respecto a los trabajos, todavía habrá bolsas de plástico en los centros de hardware, todavía habrá bolsas de plástico en los centros de departamentos, todavía habrá en el industria, y como usted mencionó, el 95%, solo el 5% para los comidas, pero el hecho es que esas trabajos no van a evaporar, todavía van a estar allí. Y la pregunta que tengo para Sanitación, ustedes establecieron normas, y quiero usar esta bolsa como un buen ejemplo. ¿No es así? Hay normas que el departamento estableció y hay muchas personas...
¿Es esa una bolsa servida a sí mismo que estás usando?
Bueno, vamos a tener una buena vista de esa bolsa servida a sí mismo. Pero el hecho es que necesitamos asegurarnos de que cuando, ya sea el bolsa de la alcaldesa Zein, o el señor Rosendahl, o el señor Reyes, o cualquiera que sea el que produzca bolsas, hay una norma que ha sido establecida para la construcción de la bolsa, el peso, etc. Y no es solo una bolsa flotante donde van a dejar el mercado y el producto va a caer en el parque. Así que lo que queremos asegurarnos es que esas normas sean publicadas a los gente que van a estar produciendo bolsas. Los alcaldías de vecindarios producen bolsas, hay muchas bolsas que la gente va a producir ahora y van a poner sus logos en ella, como este famoso logo está en esta bolsa. Pero necesitamos de alguna manera dejarles saber que hay una norma que la ciudad ha adoptado para el tipo, el material, el peso, etc. Y realmente no hemos hecho demasiada publicación sobre eso, pero eso es todo parte de lo que estamos haciendo con las bolsas que van a ser distribuidas a la gente. Necesitamos sacar eso de la gente.
Es muy correcto, señor Zein, y que tenemos que ser la única entidad que la gente buscará validar que las bolsas cumplen todas las normas. You know, it is a consumer product, so it's got to have certainly safety things, it's got to have performance standards, and there are existing market standards that address all of those. We can adopt them by extension, or we can customize, and then we intend to add some customized specifications of our own to those existing standards. So the answer is yes, we will have a standard that the entire city, no matter who is giving out or using a reusable bag, will be subjected to those standards.
I know that neighborhood councils in particular, neighborhood councils in particular, pass out a lot of the bags. We need to make sure that we don't start having these bags falling apart. Obviously, they're not going to last forever, but we want to make sure that that standard is published. So I strongly support this, I thank the folks that are there, that are supporting this, Heal the Bay and all the other groups, and to those folks that are saying they're not going to have a job, I would challenge that, because we're not going to take those bags out of the hardware stores and the others, just the supermarkets. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Rosendahl, you're next in the queue, but I don't want you to let Mr. Zine top you, because he had a prop.
Don't worry about that, I got a prop too, which is the water bottle right next, okay? First, let me just say, thank you, Paul Corretts, for outlining the history of various people in various situations. There's been a lot of people in this council. When I first joined this group in 2005, I sat between Ed Reyes and Greg Smith. My very first question, where are we on this plastic bag? Then we generated the issue quickly and fast, and then we took it to the state, and of course, they crumbled and didn't provide the leadership that they were supposed to provide. So I'm not too happy with Sacramento and its play on this issue. When we took it back, the leadership around this horseshoe got even more focused, and it is a no-brainer. And I just want to make sure, when we vote on it today, we're really looking at a timeline that's six months before the new ordinance would go in place, is that right?
That's correct, Councilman. Your vote today allows us to trigger the environmental review, also the drafting of the final ordinance, which will then come back to you for one certification of DIR or the environmental review, whatever level that ends up being, and the approval of the final ordinance.
Okay, because I don't want to stall this and drag it on through next year, I want to get it over with now, so we can start cleaning up our streams and our ocean, so we don't have this going on. (APPLAUSE) And once we pass this, and we make it the law, the land, then I want to look at the water bottle issue, which is all over the planet, I've been carrying this around for six years, as I have the homeboy cup to talk about jobs. I always talk about jobs, and that's the homeboy cup, and this is what we need to do next, when we go and get rid of the plastic bag. Thank you, colleagues, for this.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Reyes, now the pressure is on you, because Mr. Rosendahl had two props.
Well, I don't want to do any props, I just want to speak to the issue in such a way where I want to thank my colleagues for their passion, for their focus. It is heart-wrenching when we hear about the loss of jobs. I'm saying, for those that are here talking about the job, we spent $11 million on street sweeping just to pick up trash and debris that includes plastic. (SPEAKING SPANISH) We spent more than $4 million dealing with the watershed protection. We also spent $90 million for Prop O for the screens. That is well over $100 million. (SPEAKING SPANISH) I'm hoping that part of this process, and I know this is one of the directives, is that we study the impact, but also look at our job centers, our resource centers, so that we could find jobs for the folks who will be impacted by these changes. These are real people who are going to lose their jobs, and we have real methods by which to address that challenge. So this city, I believe we're doing the right thing. We're doing the right thing, not only for our city, for residents, but we're doing the right thing for our watershed and for our future. This is about our environment and the future, and we need to change it now. So, I don't feel that we should take this lightly, it's something that we should be very focused on, about making sure we don't penalize people because of this change. Part of the study is to look at this transition. So I'm hoping the Community Development Department is part of this discussion, I'm hoping that we can look at how we can place folks and line them up for job readiness, for job development, so we can transition people into other industries. So again, I thank you for your hard work, and thank Bureau of Sanitation, our commissioners, for my colleagues. Thank you, Paul, for bringing this to the table at this stage, and my colleagues are right, we've been focused on this, we've been trying to make it happen, hopefully, 40% of the population of the state of California is in Southern California. Let's get the message to Sacramento, it's time that we go statewide. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Ms. Perry, Ms. Perry. Jan, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Saldivar, I just, I'm going to ask you a question in a minute. I do support a phased-in ban on plastic bags at grocers and food marts, and I think it is a good way to start reducing the amount of plastic that enters our waste stream, but we actually do need to do more on outreach and education, and that should include a very straightforward discussion on the negative impact that plastic bags have on the environment, and why it's important for everyone to recycle them. That goes beyond just grocers and food marts. There are many exempt retailers that will be permitted to continue to use the plastic bags, and that's why you have to do the outreach and the education. So what that does mean is the waste stream will continue to be impacted. This is a giant leap forward, but there's more to do. Now, I'm going to request that the Bureau of Sanitation design an even more comprehensive outreach plan. I've heard from a lot of constituents, now, a lot of the constituents that I've spoken to, as recently as someone this morning, a majority seem unaware or concerned about the single-use bag ban. Many seem to be concerned about the financial impact that this might have on our household. So what this signals to me is that there is a need for more education and more outreach to ensure full participation by people throughout the city. Now, I'm going to support the motion today on the single-use carryout bag policy. However, I would like to ensure that we discuss possible exemptions for low-income communities regarding charging for paper bags. After a one-year grace period, are there ways for low-income residents to be exempted? And I have put in a motion to address this concern, it is item number 10B, and again, it talks about environmental justice concerns by establishing suitable exemptions for businesses serving low-income areas, as well as areas that are historically underserved by grocery stores.
If I may, Councilmember Perry, in the proposed policy and the more of the details of it, there's a provision already that borrows the language from the county that provides an exemption to low-income customers who have a WIC eligibility card or a supplemental eligibility card. And that's actually applicable throughout the city, not just in specific designated areas, so anyone of the low-income shoppers that will go anywhere in the city can in fact get a, in this case, a free paper bag.
Okay, one other quick point that I would like to make, because it's come up a number of times, people have expressed concern about using bags to pick up their animal waste, their pet waste, their dog and cat waste, and not only using those bags that, you know, you put your vegetables and your fruit in from the store, and you bring them home, and you may save those bags when you take your dog out for a walk. And then I would like you to say something publicly on the record to explain to people how this will affect that activity.
Well, certainly, for the reusability of the existing bags, that has become more of a specialty kind of a use of a plastic bag. You know, we have a very good giveaway of the dog poo bags that come in the roll, and we will continue to do that, and we see that more and more of the dog owners are going to that kind of bag. We, as well as many other cities, give away dog poo bags, so we don't believe that the unavailability of the grocery plastic bags should impact access to having...
And is there a distinction made between the carryout bags, the white, basically the white bags with the handles, or the bags with the handles, versus the bags, the plastic bags that people get when they go and they get their vegetables, and they put their vegetables, and usually it's a clear, clear plastic bag? Is there a distinction made here?
Yes, there's a technical distinction made with regards to which bag the ban would apply, so yes, there is a clear way of distinguishing, including pharmacy-type, small little bags. So this would apply to what's known as the T-shirt bag.
The T-shirt bag?
Yeah.
So the clear bags, where you put your vegetables and fruits in there, those bags are not banned?
That's correct.
Be lighter volume, plastic bags that people use for produce and for meats are exempted from this ban.
Mr. Englander, Mitchell Englander.
Thank you. Somebody had mentioned earlier that this is a no-brainer, and it's a simple issue, but it's not, it's complicated. I struggled with this, as long as I've worked on it, even as a staffer, as was mentioned earlier. And I pulled up the legislative histories we were discussing this morning, just to try to figure out all the discussion points and where we were, there's a lot of different people that weighed in on this. It was actually stated that it started in 2008, it actually started with Ed Reyes in 2006, was the first one to bring this to the chambers, and working at that point with Greg Smith and Bill Rosendahl, and there's been about a dozen motions actually brought in on this very item asking over the years since then to do something. In fact, I think we wasted and killed more trees with trying to ban the bags. This is just today's report, and maybe we should start thinking about double-sided paper, but that's another discussion. The bags end up in every one of our areas throughout the city, and I have the windiest city, or area of the city, the district, and last night, we had a lot of winds, we had down in power lines, and I will tell you, the other things that the winds do is when you bring your trash cans out at night, it blows the lids open immediately, and all those bags end up in the air, and in the trees, and then in the gutter, and then in the storm drains, and then the L.A. River, and down eventually to our ocean. And if they're lucky, if they don't get stuck in the trees and stay there for years and years, which oftentimes they do. If they don't get blown open, by the way, they still stay in our district, in my district, because then they go to Sunshine Canyon landfill, where they have a shelf life longer than all of us. And so in looking all this, to me, yes, it was a no-brainer to say we need to ban the bags. I wasn't really in support of the idea of a dual ban yet, particularly on the heels of what we just approved last week, which was banning, or actually having some kind of mandate on shopping carts, which is something else we were working on for years. So if suddenly we're not letting folks take carts off the lot, and then we had a dual ban on bags, it makes it very difficult for people to change habits overnight and figure out what we're going to do. And we can't legislate our way out of this. And so I think this approach that has been vetted through so many committees with so much paper and so much public hearing is really the best approach, that we have something. And then, lastly, this is sort of how I test common sense legislation. One would think I would ask my colleagues what they feel. I go to my wife, I ask her what she thinks, and Diana Dixon-Davis, who's over there, will tell you the same thing. I go to the members of my community, and I ask them, well, what do they think? And so I went to my wife, and I said, "Well, what do you think about paying a fee to have a bag? A fee for a paper bag, when, and the city is mandating that? So the stores, we don't even have an option to say stores can opt out of it, or low-income areas can opt out of it." And her reaction was, "That absolutely makes sense, because you're going to think about it before you go to the store, before you go on that trip, and it's not the 10 cents or 20 cents or 30 cents, or whatever that might cost you, it's the idea and the concept that you're going to get charged a fee, and that you have these bags that are readily available, that you can get, if not for free, from so many different giveaways, but from so many organizations that advertise on them. You can get them from Mr. Zine, who's got his logo on them, although I, those ones are made in China, so I'd stay away from those. But, but having said that, they're available, and it's a matter of changing habits." So I want to thank Enrique, who has worked on this for the last 10 years, and so many other folks who have done so much, and I support it in concept and the way that it's been presented, and I look forward to the ordinance coming back. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Thank you, members, I support the ban, I just want to say that. Also want to state from the record, in American Film Annals, the 42nd most important line ever mentioned was when a character, Mr. Maguire, said, "I want to say one word to you, just one word." And the other character, Benjamin Braddock, said, "Yes, sir." Mr. Maguire said, "Are you listening?" And Benjamin Braddock said, "Yes, I am." Mr. Maguire said, "Plastics." Benjamin Braddock, "Exactly what do you mean? There's a great future in plastics, think about it. You will think about it, won't you?" That was from the movie The Graduate, that was Dustin Hoffman and Walter Beal, Plastics, 1967. And I know you were too young, Mitch, to remember that movie, did you ever see that movie on AMC? Were you born? Were you born? Enrique, "I wanted to be a fireman, 1974, I took the test and failed it, but before I took the test for a fireman, I wanted to be a trash man, because I hate trash, and I hate what is done to the river. When I go down the river and I see the leaves of plastic all over the trees, I feel real bad. I hate dirty drains. I want to see sanitation via charge of street cleaning, so we connect all the river of trash into one department to keep it before it gets to the river." And I publicly want to apologize to the city of Long Beach, which receives most of our trash as it comes through the river and the storm drains. That being said, let's vote for the ban, and we will adapt and do what's necessary, and I certainly want to thank Mr. Paul Corretts. I know you get a little ban tag to you, because I know about the animals and all the care that you have, but it's all out of your heart that starts Paul Corretts moving forward. So let's move forward, and if you haven't seen The Graduate, go see The Graduate. Thank you. A film at USC, thank you, Paul.
Mr. Labange, you would look into the eyes of a packed house and tell them you failed the firefighter test. With that said, Mr. Alacón.
Person. Yeah.
Well, first of all, let me commend Paul Corretts for his leadership and his constructive progress in bringing something to us that is clearly going to pass. I just think we have too much plastic in the world. I don't know about you all, but it boils down to a simple thing. I visited Crown Poly, and all I can say is, it's sad when we find ourselves in these situations, where we are making decisions not based on the overall good, but based on the specific need, and in this case, yeah, there may be some diminution of the workforce, but frankly, 90% of the product goes overseas, so I question whether, if in fact, the companies that are producing these bags will have tremendous loss in jobs. You know, for me, this issue, I remember, you know, the, as the environmental issues changed, and the people were concerned about environment, you know, I just had to look to the little girl running around the house who kept telling me to turn the lights off and pick up the trash and, you know, do the right thing by the environment, and so I just want to thank my daughter Andrea for her leadership on this issue. Not just, not just as a Public Works Commissioner, but as a good daughter. And, you know, we tend to think that we've done okay, but frankly, when they said that in The Graduate, Mr. Labange, we were moving in a direction to look at progress in the form of things that are not necessarily conducive with our environment. And now we have to reverse that trend, and in a great way, I think, that we are making a statement today that it is time to take a step back and consider all our policies that negatively impact our environment. So it's not just about plastic bags, and it's about building a new framework for the way we think about solving problems in our community, and that's what this issue is about. You know, I chaired the Environmental Justice Committee for the state senate for many years, and I can say that, you know, who are using the beaches if not the people that come from economically challenged areas? I know when I was a kid, we went to the beach, and now, when they go to the beach, they are the ones that are suffering with the degradation that we have imposed on our beaches. And so I think this measure is an environmental justice issue. It is the right action, not just for the wealthy communities, the 10,000 letters and notes and emails that I got, but also for the kids in Pacoima who want to go to the beach, and when they go, they want it to be clean, and that's what... And that's what this is about. So this is the right thing to do on a lot of different levels. Whatever your motivation is, let's not stop with single plastic bags. Let's continue this in our conscientiousness as we move forward on all policies that are cutting across the city council desk. So with that, I want to commend all the players, especially the community, Heal the Bay, for the tremendous advocacy and all the other environmental organizations that have come together. You are creating a better world today, and as a result, our kids will be much better for it.
Richard, don't encourage Coretts. There's no telling what he'll come in here tomorrow. Mandating, so he doesn't need any encouragement. Mr. Parks.
Thank you. I have two questions, and Ricky, and then I have some comments. Do we know, when we talk about reusable bags, what they're made out of, whether they're recyclable? Do they get back into the stream, or what do we do with them?
So, Congressman, reusable bags have to be recyclable, so that they will be, at the end of their life, you know, there's a minimum performance that all reusable bags must at least last 125 uses. We know that they will last longer than that, but at least 125. At the end of their service life, they will be recyclable, and they will be in the blue bin.
Okay. And then why in the proposal are we causing the cost to go to the store? Being that the cost for baggage and things already are part of the price of the groceries, why are we then charging the customer and then giving the money to the store?
On the 10-cent proposal? It's a disincentive that, as all of you have spoken, that it is the intent that, at some point, even paper bags are not used, single-use bags, regardless of what material they're made of. So the 10-cent is a transitionary policy, and it's also a disincentive, so that folks stay away from single-use bags.
I'm just wondering, we're making it a disincentive to the customer, why we would give the money to the store and not look at it as to maybe sanitation that allows them to continue our recycling and education program?
Yeah, so I think the answer to your question as to why the 10-cent fee actually is going to be retained by the retail stores lies in the regulations of Prop 26, which prohibit any local municipality from imposing essentially what would be deemed a hidden tax. And if we were to mandate the prohibition of plastic bags and also charge a 10-cent fee, that then got funneled back to the City of Los Angeles, that would be deemed a hidden tax and impermissible under Prop 26.
What about if it went to a nonprofit that's involved in the environmental issues?
Sir Emilio Rodriguez, heels off. The fee actually also helps businesses recover the costs associated with additional bag rollout and the cost of complying with the ordinance. That was the assessment made during the county's evaluation of the 10-cent fee, and it's consistent with the city as well.
Is the county program currently in litigation?
I believe they've prevailed on that.
We are also joined by three members of the city attorney's office, who might be more prepared to respond to any questions on litigation.
Good afternoon. Ted Jordan, Public Works General Counsel. Yes, the L.A. County bag ban has been involved in litigation. There has been a decision by the trial court to uphold that ordinance, although, to my knowledge, that litigation is not completely over, and I don't know where it is right now. One of the challenges in that lawsuit was over the 10-cent fee that is paid to stores, and the court specifically upheld that in part by saying it was not a tax, because it was not going back to the city.
Okay, was that at the basis of Prop 26?
That was part of the Prop 26 challenge.
So that's being appealed now?
I don't know if the parties in that case are currently appealing that.
Thank you, Councilmember Parks. Colleagues, we do have some of our colleagues that have to leave within a certain time, and we have four on the queue. Our next speaker is Councilmember Corcoran.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm thrilled at long last to be able to rise in full support of this ban on plastic bags. I've been working on legislation to get plastics out of our ocean for at least six or seven years now, and voted on many plastic bag-related bills in the legislature, and we've had a number of motions here. And yet, clearly, we haven't done the work that we need to do to have the impact that our environment deserves and needs. And today, I think we're moving forward with a policy that will have that impact, that will finally produce the results that I think our constituents widely agree we must do. Every one of us has neighborhoods in our district, that if you drive through them, you witness the blight of plastic bag residue in trees and in fences and along sidewalks that our kids have to walk down. But there's also the immense cost to this city that's associated with plastic bags. And as we discussed earlier, there's about $16 million or so a year spent on litter removal, and it's, I think, safe to assume, wouldn't it be, Enrique, that five or six million, maybe more of that could be attributable to plastic bags directly? Think, colleagues, how hard we fought through the budget process to try to find $5 million in savings to be able to fund park services and cops and ambulance services and youth development and economic development spending. Think how much it would mean to this city to have an extra $5 million that we don't have to spend cleaning up bags. But there's also the issue of the impact on our ocean. This city has always been tied to the ocean, it's part of our heart and soul, but it's also a foundation of our economy. The state of California gets $46 billion a year in economic impact from ocean-related industries. $46 billion, which much of it is here in Los Angeles. And yet, every year, every week, every day, we're choking that ocean with plastic contamination. So I think that if people ask, why are we doing this now? I'd say, you know, what's taken us so long? And I want to applaud Mr. Coretts, and Mr. Weezer, and Mr. Garcetti, and Mr. Reyes, and everybody, and Mr. Englander, from his staff days, and so many others who've been actively involved in this issue. The time has come. This city has made a long commitment, has long had a commitment, to reducing its greenhouse gas emissions, to reducing our use of electricity and water, to reducing our reliance on petroleum, and to being a zero-waste city. With this one act today, we advance every single one of those essential environmental policies. So, colleagues, I'm proud to rise in support of this ban. I respectfully ask for your aye vote.
Thank you, Councilmember. Our next speaker is Councilmember Garcetti, followed by Councilmember Weezer.
Thank you. I just want to ask about the timing and what we can do in pushing this. We've heard the term, we've heard six months. I know there has to be an environmental compliance report done. What is the quickest we can do this in? And I'd like to put the days on the record, so we can, I think we all work best off the deadline.
Yeah, so under ordinary circumstances, and a full environmental review process could take anywhere in the range of six to nine months, but given that the council's action is likely to be to adopt essentially the county model, we could utilize a truncated EIR process, which will likely take anywhere in the range of four to six months.
All right. I'd like to direct that we do this in four months. If we don't meet the four months, we can figure that out here, but I think we should all work off of that four-month process. Since the county has done the environmental work, I think we're ready to move as quickly as possible on this. And that, you can just take that as a friendly motion, yeah. And then, building on what Ms. Perry had reached out, maybe one of the things we could do is have a targeted, certainly in low-income areas of my own district, we could have Bureau of Sanitation target a reusable bag giveaways in low-income neighborhoods, and then include the effects in those neighborhoods. We could even chop it up in a small digestible area where we go and we try to blanket, you know, a certain area, see what the effect is 24 months from now. But I know, no matter what the income level of people are in this city, we've heard loud and clear, it doesn't matter if you have a lot of money or if you don't have a lot of money, people want to be a part of getting past our bag culture.
Mr. Weezer, did you want to speak now, or do you want me to put you around the end? I thought I'd have you and then Mr. Coretts to close.
Sure.
Okay, so with that said, Mr. Parks, you're back up.
Thank you very much. Let me just tell you some of my concerns. Having been here when we had the discussion years ago about paper, and people wholeheartedly rushed to plastic, and I don't think it was well thought out, because we're here today talking about what plastic has done to our environment and our community. Today, I'm concerned that, as we talk about giving away the plastic and go to multi-use bags, we're not giving a lot of consideration of health issues. And when you look at some of the authorities, such as L.A. County and the CDC in Atlanta, they tell you things, such as L.A. County, that you set aside specific reusable bags for packaging groceries and use separate bags for raw meat products, being careful where you store them. So even while they're stored, they could create a problem. You go to the CDC, and they specifically say, separate, do not cross-contaminate one food with another. And so I'm concerned that as we go forward, or at least addressing this, there's not been enough consideration of, are we moving the plastic issue into a health issue? And that 10 years from now, we'll be talking about people dying and didn't wash their bags and all the things we're asking them to do. And then, when we look at the plan, having watched the city in the past as relates to enforcement versus education, we've not done well on enforcement. We can go back to the sign ordinance, we can go down to several. What we do know, that we've had great success on the issue of recycling. We had great success in getting people to start thinking about solar. The issue of the Prop 26 violation, if it goes through court, if we're mimicking the county, and they're going through litigation, do we end up in the same results if it comes out unsuccessful after we're in midstream moving forward? I don't think we can ignore the job issue, because this is what my concerns have been on job committee, where so many times people talk about whether we're business-friendly. These are the kinds of issues that we implement and put on the consumer and put on to the businesses, that they complain that reflects that the city isn't job-friendly. So we're going to completely change dramatically how people shop and what they do with their bags and all that other, but we really, I don't think, have given due consideration to what does it take if you have people with a reusable bag with blood from the chicken or the beef? And we know that that could, coli could be moved just from a knife cutting a piece of meat to another piece of meat. And so these are things that I don't see that we've given it due consideration, so that 10 years from now, we're not here talking about that the health considerations, we solve the plastic, but now we created health issues beyond what we considered. So it looks like we've moved from killing trees by saving, or coming from paper bags, saving trees. Then we went to plastic, and we're killing fish. Now we haven't quite figured out whether these multi-use bags are going to kill people. And I think that's the dilemma I have in looking at the plan, that we really haven't given much, and the material has given very little consideration to the issue of addressing the health concerns, when we see all over the place, just simple not washing your hands and fixing food in a restaurant can make many people sick. Having a bag that basically ferments in your closet, or wherever you sit it, sit that bag, or wherever you place it, and commingling it with other bags, how much of that creates future health concerns? So that's where I have a concern about, and why I have a very difficult time in when I review this and then go to the CSC and then look at the county, that it seems like we've ignored some of those important health issues.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Just to let you know, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Coretts, we're going to be losing a couple of members quickly, so you want to be mindful of that. Ms. Perry.
Mr. Saldivar, I wanted to ask you another question, follow-up to what I raised before on more outreach and education. What's the percentage of plastic bottles that are recycled in the City of Los Angeles?
Plastic bottles?
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Perry, you know, the recycling rate, okay, so because of the redemption value of plastic bottles, it is a very high percentage. I don't have that number right now.
How about a range?
Close to aluminum, which is about 80%. Aluminum's 90%, so 80% for plastic bottles.
And then about, what do you think the percentage is for recycling of plastic bags?
It's 5%.
Yeah, less than 5% by weight.
So we compare 80% on the bottles to about 5% on the plastic bags? So we really have to, it drives my point home about how we have to push ourselves to teach people and to do much more outreach and education, because this is a good start with the food stores and food marts, but there are other retailers. And so we're going to have to push people as part of the next phase of your outreach plan to recycle the bags, the plastic bags, or the T-shirt bags, if you will, that are not covered by this ban, and to expand our education.
Yes, very good point. We will ensure, we will make sure we do that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Perry. Now, Mr. Weezer, then Mr. Coretts to close. And again, remember, you've got two members that are ready to skit out.
Got you. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and this was a great discussion. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. We will take as a friendly amendment Mr. Garcetti's request that we get this report back in four months, the ordinance and the EIR. So, and we will move that swiftly through my committee and get it back to council as soon as possible. Secondly, you know, my daughter did a science project about six months ago, and she told me there's this thing called the Great Pacific Patch, and she told me that about 2 billion pounds of plastic are created each and every year in the world, and that 10% of that ends up in our ocean. The fact of the matter is that, as humans, we create something, and then we have to go back and adjust, hopefully, so that we don't cause additional environmental damage to our planet. But we're doing that here today. But the fact is that plastic bags is only one small component of overall plastics that we need to address. But this is a step forward, but a very necessary step to move forward. We will get the additional information, we can, to see if we should do the same for bags, for paper bags. We just didn't feel, at least the committee at this time, that we were at that place now. And finally, let me end by saying, those, Amendment B put forward by Ms. Perry, you know, we spent some time in committee coming up with a framework to direct our staff to come up with something as an ordinance. The Amendment B is kind of vague. It says to amend our policy that we're doing today to address environmental justice concerns by establishing suitable exemptions for business-serving low-income areas, as well as areas which are historically underserved by grocery stores. What those suitable exemptions are, we don't know. We don't know how this would work. We have a framework that we're moving forward, and in fact, our six-month window that we have, where we would allow for free paper bags after the plastic bag, I think, is addressing the low-income issue. So I would ask that we move this Amendment B to committee, I would motion that we move Amendment B to committee, so that we further discuss this when it comes back with the ordinance and the environmental review as discussed and presented today in council. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, hold your horses, Mr. Coretts. Ms. Perry.
That's exactly what I want to do. I do want to move it to committee, because I think it's something that needs to be discussed in total, and I think we need to bring in advocacy groups and examine social service providers, and examine what this will mean in terms of people who are on fixed incomes or people who are on public assistance. So I think it's absolutely a great idea to send it to committee, and I hope we have a full-body discussion about it, and that it comes back to the floor. So I think that's great, and I'm glad you seconded it, Mr. Rosendahl. And absolutely, and I'm certainly not looking to hold up things here today. I just think we have to remember that not everybody can afford to buy these bags, and we have to examine the ramifications of that and to be aware of it. So, thank you.
Thank you. So without objection, Item 10B will be sent to committee. Mr. Coretts to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, one acknowledgement, UFCW employees and the employees of reusable bag manufacturers, both weren't able to speak, so I'd ask them all to stand to show that you were here. Those are reusable bag employees. Also, I want to take one second to thank Enrique Saldivar and Andrea Alarcon, without whose leadership we wouldn't be here doing this today. Lastly, I just want to say that we've created so much momentum behind this issue, that even the statistic of how many cities have passed bans like this is now inaccurate. The current number is actually 48 municipalities in California that have passed similar bans, including Fort Bragg and Santa Barbara, which did it just yesterday. And Carpinteria and Austin even passed the ban on paper and plastic, following the leadership... And Carpinteria and Austin even passed the ban on paper and plastic, following the leadership that we showed in just having the motion. Cities are quickly jumping on board because of our leadership, and it would be the ultimate irony for us not to pass this today. We expect this also to lead to the almost immediate passage of state legislation, which has actually been held in anticipation of the momentum our passage will create. So I believe today will be a historic tipping point towards an eventual elimination of all paper and plastic bags throughout the world, and I ask for an eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Okay, let's hold it down so we can vote on this sucker. Okay. No speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll.
As amended.
As amended. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 1 no.
It has passed. Okay. Okay, let's keep it down. We still have, we have other work to do. Mr. Clerk, it's my understanding that Item 9 has been amended so that we have the go-ahead to vote on Item 9.
Correct, sir. 9A has been submitted and distributed for council's consideration. And, Mr. President, I believe we do have cards on that matter.
In fact, let's go to Item 18. Okay, and then we'll come back. Item 18, I think we have one card, and that's from Mr. Walsh. Please come forward, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, are you still here somewhere?
Yes.
He is, okay. Mr. Walsh, okay, let's keep it quiet. Mr. Walsh.
This is HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org. Come for our endorsements. This is reap. We're 100% in favor. And you know, when they closed the concentration camps, the people who produced barbed wire, they lost their jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, I want to move now, Mr. City Clerk, to Item 22. I have cards. I want Dr. Tom Williams and Arminak Norajanian. Dr. Williams and Arminak Norajanian, we are on Item 22. Dr. Williams.
Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council and strong supporter of the Taylor Yard people, not the railroad. However, in this one, don't we have representatives on the MetroLink board? Don't we have representatives on the MTA board? Both of these boards control MetroLink and control a large amount of the noise that has been the continuing complaint for almost two years by the people from Emory, from the Taylor Yard area, both in the east side and the west side. So what we're concerned about is, doesn't anything happen through the city to MTA or MetroLink? Because we have representatives on those boards. So why can't we have them also be instructed to represent the citizens of the Cypress Park and Emory Village? So what we're trying to do now is get somebody else to go forward with it. But you already have MTA representatives that can exert force on the MetroLink. MetroLink has already started moving things around because they got so much heat from the communities and from various people, some of which are going to be candidates and such like that. So we have the ability right now. So why isn't it being done by the city council representatives and others on the MTA board and those on the MetroLink board? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norajanian. Please come forward.
Good morning. I respect all city council members. Good morning. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Actually, as a liberal Democrat, I actually am a human advocate. I support environmental protection measures. You know, this is, this Item 22 is an environmental protection measure, and I endorse it. And I ask city council members to, you know, to vote for this Item 22. God actually introduces environmental protection measures to make Taylor Yard's area a quiet zone, like this resolution introduced by council members Rayes and Garcetti. Well, actually, it's, I believe that we should amend this motion, propose, you know, to, you know, to implement some concrete measures, environmental protection measures, you know, to make those train, you know, excessive noise created by trains, you know, minimum. For instance, we might have mentioned, like mufflers, adding more mufflers towards trains, you know, or actually replace those engines, you know, with electrical engines and make, you know, as a minimum noise as possible. So we all, of course, need a quiet zone in the area. We need some, you know, establish some shields, you know, something like, or kind of environmental mufflers, you know, in the Taylor Yard zone, Taylor Yard area, you know, to make it a quiet zone. And ask city council members to introduce more environmental protection measures, you know, to make our environment, you know, safer.
Thank you, thank you. So on this item, no speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, next, Mr. Clerk, I'm going to move to Item 23. I have a card on that item. It's Mr. John Walsh. Mr. Walsh, please come forward. Item 23, HollywoodHighland.org. Mr. Walsh. Gave you a free plug.
Thank you. John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. Person of the Year, Herb Wesson. Come to our website. You, incidentally, are getting an A+ so far. Item mark on the curve. Eric got F+ when he was running the meetings.
Mr. President--
I just want to point out that this is a $7 million settlement. $7 million. Barry Bowman versus Tommy Wyatt. Now, there will be no discussion of this issue. There will be, incidentally, I'm not sure what's going on here, going on here, but it is $7 million. Maybe we could have a little discussion from the city attorney. That's my second minute. HollywoodHighland.org, go and see our endorsements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Okay, on this item, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Walsh, I should have told you to just stay up there. So that's my mistake. We're going to go move to Item 17 now, where I have Mr. Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org, and Arnold Sacks. So, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, I don't have to tell you the website, or just go to Walsh Confidential. This is number 17. This concerns a lighting district at the Expo Light Rail. Now, I hope you realize that the Expo Light Rail was opened before it was ready to open. The PUC, it was poorly designed. We now have a whole bunch of PUC inspectors there. You know what? When the people, when Mike Hernandez and others built the Pasadena Line, it was built, not crooked. It was built on the up and up, on time and on schedule. But the crooks who built the Expo line, hundreds of millions over budget, problems with their lights, problems with the PUC, I can't believe how badly you did on the Expo line. HollywoodHighland.org, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. No speakers in the queue on this item, so let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, we're going to now move to Item 27. I have cards on that item. I have Mr. John Walsh. Mr. Walsh passes. I do not see Daniel Garcia, Arminak Norajanian. I guess there's no chance you're going to pass, huh? Come forward. Come forward, Arminak. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, city council members. Good afternoon. Phil Angelinos, actually, as a liberal Democrat, a human advocate that runs for California State Assembly. I actually very much endorse this Resolution 27, Resolution introduced by Council Member Rayes and Wesson, relative to in connection with California Senate Bill 1210, introduced by Senator DeSaulnier. Because this Resolution establishes a permanent source of funding for affordable housing. I fully support the idea of affordable housing, and I believe that establishing permanent source for funding, you know, for affordable housing in the city of Los Angeles, for instance, and the whole state of California. It's a major priority for California State Assembly and for Los Angeles City Council. And I believe that establishing a fee of $75 per recognition fee on real estate documents in order to fund that permanent source for affordable housing, it's a good idea and actually, that's actually a very responsible funding of this SB 122 bill. And I ask city council members to pass this Resolution, introduced by Council Members Rayes and Wesson, in order to have funding for affordable housing. As thousands of Angelinos, you know, wait for affordable housing and signed up for Section 8 Affordable Housing, I also, one of those Angelinos signed up for Section 8 Affordable Housing. And I hope that was funding for affordable housing will become a permanent source of, you know--
Thank you. So you recommend we pass this, right? Okay. On this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, members, I'm going to task you, if we could, I'd like to come up with something else other than open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. So let's make it a contest. Give me a new way to move on this. Mr. Clerk, Item 9, called Special by Cards. I have Mr. Walsh. Scott Crawford. Elizabeth Peterson. So let's see. One behind the other. Arminak Norajanian.
John Walsh blogging, of course, at HollywoodHighland.org. This is another liquor license. They don't call it Alcohol Hollywood for nothing. And liquor, I mean, aren't we ever going to have a cap? Does it have to be every 60 feet, there's a liquor license? I mean, you never, never deny alcohol. I want everyone in America to come to Hollywood, the rape center of the world, and watch the women who are given knockout drugs at clubs and then raped on the streets of Hollywood, one on Whitley. Why? Because of the alcohol. The people who rape, are rapists, are always on drugs. I just want to realize, it's going to be a vote. You never saw an alcohol license you didn't like, and that's why rape is up 11%. Check the ComStat figures. HollywoodHighland.org. Goodbye, thanks, I'm on my way.
Thank you, Scott Crawford, Elizabeth Peterson. Don't wait on him, followed by Michael Carion that I don't see. So go on, Ms. Peterson.
Councilmembers, Elizabeth Peterson. First of all, the National NCT Towers is a downtown project. The building is an adaptive reuse project. It's had 20,000 square feet of ground floor commercial empty for over 20 years. It was approved under ZA 2009 0467 CUB, CUX. It was vetted extensively. We had full support of LAPD, D Lang, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Perry, and all of the residents of the building, and I would respectfully request that you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have no Scott Crawford, going once, twice, thrice? Okay, no speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, what's next on our agenda?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, consider them posted and referred. Announcements, members, announcements. Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to stand and congratulate NHL's Western Conference champs, the Los Angeles Kings. Want to thank, next, congratulate Team Captain Dustin Brown for moving on to the final and hoping we can bring the Stanley Cup here to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's a double shout-out for the Kings. We already did it.
Oh, we did.
We did, but you did it much better than I did. Other announcements?
I was related.
Anybody other than Mr. Coretts? Mr. Laban?
This weekend is Memorial Day weekend, and we will recognize those who paid the ultimate price. Tomorrow, here at City Hall, there's a small, modest ceremony to remember public employees, whether it be firefighters, police officers, engineers, traffic officers, water and power, especially those who built the Aqueduct, who paid the price and lost their life in service to the city. So as we anticipate Memorial Day weekend tomorrow, please reflect on those city employees who gave their life in service to Los Angeles. There will be a brief ceremony on the Spring Street steps at 9:30 tomorrow. Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And congratulations, by the way. Great work.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, thank you. One announcement, I think all of you know Kayan Kaney on my staff. I met Kayan during my campaign for city council, and he joined my legislative staff and has been my principal deputy on the floor here during council meetings. And he has handled issues from the budget to food trucks to condoms and all the other crazy things that I deal with. He's been a mainstay of my staff, strategic, hardworking, all-around good guy. And today, I'm sad to say, is his last day here at council. I'm sorry to see him go, but he's leaving for a great opportunity, and he'll be joining Englander, Kenabi, and Allen. And so I want to wish Kayan well and thank him for all the great work he did for the fifth district.
Thank you for all your great work, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And, Mr. Coretts, can you train your new staff member not to bump into me every time he comes and talks to you? No, I'm sorry to see you go, buddy. You're a lot of help. I see your smiley face every day here, and you're a lot of help to me in a lot of issues as well. Congratulations, good luck.
Mr. Garcetti.
Is there any rumor to the truth that you're going to work for the plastic bag industry? No, congratulations. You've been great to have around the horseshoe, and thank you for your wonderful service to the people of LA.
Okay, adjourning motions, members. If I could get everyone in the chambers to please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise today, colleagues, to adjourn in memory of Antonino Acetta, a beloved member of the San Pedro community. Born September 11th, 1924, in St. Louis, Missouri, passed away peacefully at the age of 87 last Tuesday, May 15th, in Harbor City. He was surrounded by his loving wife of 63 years, Seraphina, children Joe, his wife Flori Acetta, Genevieve Harper, and Matthew Acetta, and many other-- Floria Acetta, Genevieve Harper, and Matthew Acetta, and many other family, big Italian family friends, and friends. Nino was a commercial fisherman and then went to work for Safeway Stores for twenty years. Nino was a faithful member of the Retail Clerks, Sons of Italy, and the St. Joseph's Table Society at Mary's Star of the Sea Parish. A vigil service will be held tonight, May twenty-third, seven p.m. at McNerney's. A funeral mass will be offered tomorrow, ten thirty, at Mary's Star of the Sea Parish, and two mitzvahs will follow at Also Cemetery in Long Beach, and in lieu of flowers, donations can be made in Nino's name to Mary's Star of the Sea Parish, and visitation will be today from three to seven at McNerney's Marquisary on Fifth Street in San Pedro.
Thank you, Joe. Adjourning vote, Mr. Caretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Florence Zeldin, who passed away earlier this week. Many of you know Rabbi Isaiah Zeldin, the founding rabbi of Stephen S. Weiss Temple. It was founded in nineteen sixty-four by Rabbi Zeldin and his wife Florence, along with thirty-five other families. It has grown to over three thousand member families and was one of the largest reform synagogues in the country. In addition to her leadership role at Stephen S. Weiss, Florence Zeldin was also an accomplished author of children's books, including The Mouse in Our Jewish House, The Importance of One, Shabbat Shalom, and What's the Big Idea. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Caretz. You have another one?
I also have one more.
And Mr. Rosendahl has a second on that.
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn also in memory of Samuel Gordon of Mid-Wilshire, who passed away this weekend at age eighty-eight. He loved his family, his work, many dogs, two cats, and his Corvette. He's survived by his wife Stella, his brother Gideon, his children Jan, Michael, and Leora, as well as numerous grandchildren and great-grandchildren, and donations in his memory may be made to two of my favorite institutions, the Jewish National Fund and the German Shepherd Rescue, and may he rest in peace.
Given the Corvette and the dogs, I would like to be on that with you. Sounds like my kind of person.
Yes.
On this side, adjourning, Mr. Parks.
Thank you. I would like to ask to be adjourned in memory of John Caldwell, who passed away May eighteen, two thousand and twelve. John was a product of the Los Angeles public school system, where he started his education Marvin Avenue School and concluded at Fairfax High School. He excelled in social studies and also was a member of their varsity basketball team. He attended UCLA and the University of Texas Law School. John has a lifelong commitment to ideas and social involvement is where this crystallized. At UCLA, he served as president of the UCLA Black Student Alliance. He graduated with honors at UCLA with a bachelor's degree in history. He then attended the Law School of the University of Texas, where he was president of the Thurgood Marshall Legal Society and was a law clerk for the Central Texas Legal Aid Society. As an attorney, he initially practiced law in Westwood, and for the past seven years, he had an office in La Merde Park. He served as an attorney for the La Merde Park Merchants Association, worked extensively in the juvenile justice system, and represented various small businesses in the community. Survived by a host of family members. His funeral services are scheduled for Friday, May twenty-fifth, at one p.m. at Holman United Methodist Church, located at thirty-three twenty West Adams Boulevard in Los Angeles. The repast will follow right after the service.
Mr. Parks, the heavyset kind of--
He's run for office several times, yes.
Was he ill?
I don't know. I was shocked when I got it this morning.
Yeah, so I'd like to go on that, that one with--
Mr. Wesson, also Ms. Perry.
Yeah, okay. Any more adjourning motions? With that said, members, this meeting is adjourned.